We have the slide jacket.
They have a slide jacket.
Okay, great.
But we can't tell if it's up.
Perfect. I won't worry about it. Terrific. So, the Housing Bureau produces, preserves, protects housing for Portlanders. We accomplish this by building and preserving quality affordable housing, creating new homeownership opportunities for vulnerable communities, and working to close the minority homeownership gap. We protect renters and homeowners from displacement, housing discrimination, and homelessness. We support programs that help low-income Portlanders find, rent, buy, retain, and repair their homes. And through the Joint Office of Homeless Services, the Bureau invests in programs to prevent homelessness and support economic stability. We are also jointly developing plans with the Joint Office to meet the city's goal for 2,000 homes for individuals and families requiring supportive housing. It looks like we have the slides up. Okay, thank you.
Great.
The Portland Housing Bureau is responsible for the management of several sources of public funds. Our three major sources of funds include tax increment financing, federal funds, and local sources, including a construction excise tax, inclusionary zoning fees, short-term rental revenue, and general fund resources. Since we were created in 2010, we have expanded from a predominantly geographically limited agency relying on tax increment funds to our Bureau with a true citywide reach in rental development and homeownership. From 2015 to 17, we focused on securing and expanding additional programming and resources to provide greater housing affordability. Heading into the next fiscal year, the Housing Bureau will increase its focus on services for renters and landlords through the Office of Rental Services. In addition, we'll continue to increase the production of rental housing and homeownership units, as well as focusing on the successful implementation of the Affordable Housing Bond. On the third slide you have before you is our production pipeline. Since the declaration of a housing emergency and the surge of resources in the last three years, we've been able to put an unprecedented amount of funds into affordable housing development. In 2017, we preserved and produced 656 units of affordable housing, exceeding our 500-unit-a-year annual goal. We're opposed to exceed these goals in both 2018 and 19. We have 948 units that will be completed this year, and another 978 units coming online next year. The Bureau will also continue to prioritize our fiscal stewardship over this large investment in our housing infrastructure. The Portland Housing Bond is an important part of our next year's work. Last year, the Housing Bureau and the mayor's office, in partnership with numerous community stakeholders, finalized a policy framework for the Housing Bond. Since the completion of that framework, we've begun to secure acquisitions and development opportunities. We've identified two new sites for development, one in northeast and one in southeast, which you'll see on the slide before you. The middle location is actually the Ellington, which was purchased in 2017, which is a 263-unit affordable housing complex. And then you'll also note that we have two new acquisitions in process in East Portland. One is a new building that is unoccupied, and the second is an existing building that will prioritize preventing displacement for those tenants. We've recently moved to quarterly dashboard reporting on our progress toward our annual goals. We believe this is a really important way to communicate with the public as to our progress, and will help us measure success and be able to identify course corrections as needed with our programming. This slide represents the first two quarters of key performance indicators that we're I'd now like to move into some of our budget requests and proposed reductions. As all bureaus were required to submit a 5% proposed reduction, the Housing Bureau receives approximately, just for your reference, about $2.8 million in general fund resources. So we've proposed two places to reach that cut. The first is just over $30,000 from the Director's Office and Business Operations, and the second would be an additional cut of $110,000 to the East Portland Rental Rehabilitation Our first major budget request is to realign funding for the previously mentioned East Portland Rental Rehabilitation Program for one year to determine if this program, as it was originally intended, is viable. The council funded funding to incent private market landlords to rehabilitate their units in exchange for a loan with a 10-year affordability period. In the last two years, despite our best efforts and taking on different strategies, we've been unable to secure participation from any private landlords. We believe this is primarily due to the current rental market and the reluctance of private owners to restrict their units even for a 10-year period, but we also believe this is exasperated by the lack of mandatory rental inspections and enforcement to identify buildings with code violations. We would propose that we reprogram these funds for a one-year basis for home repair services for low-income seniors and disabled homeowners in East Portland. We think that this would help stabilize families and also improve the housing stock in East Portland. If you were to support this request, we would either be able to repair homes, either 115 or, if we took the cut, about 96 homes. We did also request funds for a citywide homeownership repair program. We believe that this is a critical way of helping stabilize seniors and individuals with disabilities stay in their homes. The second major portion of our budget request this year is for the Rental Services Office. We are requesting both one-time and ongoing funds. Last year, the mayor increased the amount of funds available for legal education and fair housing. We would request to continue that $600,000 worth of funds this year. We would also be requesting approximately $200,000 to support two staff in the Rental Services Office. This is to answer renter questions and landlord questions, and is even more important to us now that mandatory relocation assistance is passed as a permanent policy, which requires reporting by the landlords, as well as the Bureau to process at least 12 different exemptions under the current policy. We also have a one-time request for rental services. The first is $200,000 to complete and bring online a rental registration system. We've been working in concert with OMF and BTS to plan for this rental registration system. We would also be requesting additional funding for culturally-specific language legal services, as well as education and training services. These are both two key requests that we received from our Renter Services Commission and the recently-closed Mandatory Relocation Policy Commission that was meeting on the policy up until last month. Just to give you an idea of the Bureau's staffing versus funding, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background information on where we stand. We've had an unprecedented number of new resources added, and our staffing has remained relatively flat overall. The final piece of our budget request does not have a general fund impact, but would move staffing from limited term to permanent staffing. We believe that these programs we have in place now require staffing to be ongoing, and so there are four positions that we have requested: a housing program specialist, an administrative specialist, support for our preference policy, and management analyst. In addition, we've put in a placeholder request for two positions related to the Housing So that actually brings me to the end of my presentation. I wanted to make sure that this body had enough time to answer any -- that I had enough time to answer any questions that you may have.
Let me jump in. Three questions. How many units do you estimate we are currently short at 0 to 60% of median family income?
Commissioner, we need approximately 24,000 units at 0 to 30. I'm sorry, 0 to 60, and we are looking for 6,000 to 8,000 between 60 and 80%. So 24,000.
And how did you get to that number? That number includes who?
We look at the available housing stock in the city of Portland, both in the regulated market and in the private market, and we compare that to the most recent census data that we have, based on incomes of Portlanders, and we are looking for households to be no more burdened by housing costs than 30%. So it's an extrapolation of rental costs and the market.
And we're clear that those 24,000 units will likely not be built unless the city offers some combination of carrot and stick. Is that correct?
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay. Do you know what the current Section 8 success rate is in the city? That is, the percentage of tenants with Section 8 vouchers who are successful within the statutory timeframe?
Commissioner, I would want to get back with you on that. The last time I checked, we were in the 70% success rate, but I'd want to get back with you a percentage number.
And that's consistent with what we're hearing: tight rental market, landlords being very selective, and so the value of the voucher becoming less -- fewer vouchers being put into use, and that's money that we're leaving on the table. What's the current balance of the Housing Investment Fund?
I believe, Commissioner, we have just over $4 million presently in the Housing Investment Fund.
And is it fair to say that that is among our most flexible sources of funding?
Yes.
So, for example, if it's the council's desire to potentially increase revenues from other sources, put them in the HIF, the HIF can be used for many purposes, including providing services for permanent supportive housing?
Yes.
And my last question, although I think it may have to wait -- it should wait for the next -- the Joint Office of Homeless Services, is the money that we put into the Joint Office essentially a pass-through through the Housing Bureau, or does it go directly from the city?
We manage the intergovernmental agreement for the city, so it goes through our budget, and we act as the fiscal agent for the city.
And just to be clear, I understand it's the mayor's intention this year for us to continue funding somewhere around the $26 million level. Is that correct?
I would look to Mayor Wheeler to answer the question.
So it's approximately $27 million. It is the current appropriation level plus 3% CPI on the administration at the office level.
Okay. And it's our intention in this budget to continue at that level?
That's my intention.
Good. Thank you very much.
Shannon, could we go over those numbers, the shortfall numbers again? I didn't quite catch. You said 24,000 at 0 to 60?
Yes.
I thought that that was our 0 to 30 number. No?
Matt, come to the mic, please.
Yeah, Matthew.
I'm just interested to see if these numbers have changed at all in the last couple of years.
So, we pull a lot of those --
Name for the record, please.
Oh, Matthew Schaub with the Housing Bureau. We pull a lot of those numbers from CHAZ data, which has a little bit of a lag, and so in terms of -- people are talking about income increases in the most recent census data, and that probably won't be incorporated in for another year or so. But if you're looking at just the city of Portland and not Multnomah County, that might be why there's some discrepancy in the numbers that are floating around out there.
Yeah.
It's 24,000 at 60% and below for the city.
Okay.
It increases to 30,000 at 60 and below if you're looking at the entire county.
And then what about 60 to 120, I guess? Because 120 is where rents, market rate rents, become affordable. Do we have a number on that?
Well, for 60 to 80, it's, as Shannon said, between 6,000 and 8,000 for the city. We -- I would need to get back to --
That was the 6 to 8,000.
6 to 8.
Okay, that's the number that I missed. And then, do we have a current housing wage for Portland? Like, how much someone needs to earn to afford? I mean, it was around $23 an hour last year, I think.
I mean, it would be similar, maybe to 23, 24. Rent increases haven't been as dramatic in the last year, and so you'd see the wage rate needed to be about the same.
Well, we keep hearing about how rents are coming down, so you would think that housing wage would be coming down.
I think you're seeing the flattening of rent rates on new construction, but older stock, you're still seeing increases.
Agreed. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Fritz, yeah.
Yeah, on that note, I thought it was really interesting in the report of City Budget Office that average rent increases slowed to 2%, which is less than the rate of inflation. So, thank you very much for a very clear presentation and for all your work, and thank you to the City Budget Office for your analysis, which I pretty much agree with in its entirety. I do think we need to have the bigger picture discussion about what is the new normal on houseless services. I think we should be rewarding the Joint Office for having done more than they promised, which is a good thing. Obviously, we could keep putting money into that for the foreseeable future, and the question is how much, and particularly in relation to are rents starting to stabilize? I think that we need to look at the new normal in both of those. Why are you asking for more general fund resources rather than the fee-based renter rental inspection program as envisioned by Commissioner Fish's Quality Rental Housing Work Group?
Commissioner, at this point, we are looking at other options, both for fee-based, but we wanted to make sure that you had the full picture as to what the costs would be if you choose to move forward with a fee-based system. But we are exploring that as well.
Yeah, I think making it fee-based, you know, I think $5 a month was the per unit was the fee that was talked about, and that would then have the option of providing a number of different services in addition to the inspections and all those things. So I would encourage you to look at that. Also, you've got the ongoing money for the Office of Rental Services at 1.15 million. It's also mentioned that we have money for the Development Incentive Team, and I didn't see any analysis of what the Development Incentives Team has been doing and plans to do.
So the Development Incentive Team is a conglomeration of some of our former teams that were under different portions of the Bureau, and including staff that's working on inclusionary housing. So they work on private market development incentives, inclusionary zoning, the WHULTI program, the multi-program, if that's to be renewed, and all of the SDC exemptions that come through, both in the private market and for our affordable housing providers. So they're essentially focused on that area. The new work is predominantly around inclusionary housing implementation.
And then, just my last question. I realized after last week's preliminary, the first bureaus that went through, that we didn't have the equity analysis that we've had in past years in terms of how's the Bureau's doing with hiring and retaining people of color, people with disabilities. Do you happen to know your numbers offhand?
I do not. I believe that we're finalizing those. I think we're actually doing quite well, but I would get you those numbers. I would defer to actually getting you hard numbers than trying to speak off the cuff.
I just wanted to raise that, Mayor, because that's kind of de-emphasized in the budget process now, so maybe we need a different summary of how are we doing on our equity, particularly with regards to workforce hiring and retention. So I'd like to see that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe, Shannon, that we saw that data fairly recently.
We've had some data come out in the last few weeks, but I can't, off the top of my head, I would not want to report on that and be inaccurate.
Okay, fair enough. We'll get that to the commissioners.
When do you come forward again with your annual housing reports?
We're looking at coming back to you next month.
And will the report include a separate section on our new policy, our new goals around permanent supportive housing, and also our outcomes to date?
Commissioner, I think we will have essentially a placeholder for our work going forward. We have not completed the planning process yet for the Joint Office, but we will give you a snapshot of what our progress is in general with permanent supportive housing and what we've put into the pipeline since then, but we have not completed planning with the Joint Office yet.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could make a recommendation on that front, Commissioner Fish, I would propose that be added to the annual performance measures. We'll have to find one more, though, so that it's even, but that is obviously going to continue to be of interest to the council now that we've set this goal of 2,000 units over 10 years. It would be nice to have a running total, so I will make sure that happens.
Yeah, so I had a couple of questions about the 24,000 and $68,000 numbers for people that are a percentage of AMALI and understock of housing. Is that, that's for the current shortage? I mean, is there, does, is there any forecasting done based on immigration and other factors on what that might look like in two years or five years or anything like that?
We're planning under the Central City 235 Plan, and as well as our next comprehensive plan, to have a need for an additional 10,000 units over the period of time. The, you know, a lot of what happens with 0 to 30, the lowest of low incomes, though, is quite frankly really dependent upon federal levels of support, whether that be through voucher programs or even through Social Security or disability. Incomes at that level that we're looking at with 0 to 30 are predominantly folks that have disabilities or are very, very low-income seniors, but we are projecting a need for another 10,000 units.
So you're projecting a need for 10,000 units in addition to the 24 plus 6 to 8 that are currently underserved?
Yes.
Okay. I had a question about the, you said that you were on the new pending expense, bond-related expense in East Portland where you're prioritizing avoiding displacement. This is for the Housing Bond progress on the East Portland. There are a couple of new, one that you said was going to be an acquisition, and I think the other, you said you were going to, you were working to prioritize avoiding displacement existing tenants?
Yes.
Okay. My question just on that one was, is that a privately-owned building that you're doing that work on?
Yes.
So if I'm the owner of that building and I know that the city is prioritizing avoiding displacement with no, with no strong disincentives in place to avoid having them increase the cost of living there, are you working with that owner to make sure that they keep rents affordable? Because if the city's going to be on the hook via the bond to cover the difference in price between what people can pay and what they're being charged, if there's no cap on what they're being charged, I see potential issue.
So the Housing Bond is used for capital. We cannot use it for services or paying rent differential, but what we are looking for are opportunities where housing is moving to, from a market affordable to market unaffordable, which is what we're seeing a lot in East Portland, which is displacing a lot of families. And we're actually planning on buying that building, so we would be moving that building that we're speaking of into permanent affordability and helping those tenants remain in East Portland.
Okay, so you're talking about buying the building?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't get that from your presentation.
Director Callahan, can I just go back for a moment to Section 8?
Certainly.
As everyone knows, Section 8 is the federal voucher program. It's the largest housing program in the state of Oregon. We're not really clear where it's going to end up in the president's budget or in whatever budget the Congress passes, although historically voucher programs have done better than direct subsidies with some Republicans. But I'm concerned about the success rate that you said is now back into the, potentially in the 70s. What that means is that more than a quarter of people who get a voucher after going through a laborious process are not able to successfully secure a tenancy. Now, when we last looked at this a number of years ago, we found out that things like market conditions, discrimination, and also the way the program was administered were barriers. So we've addressed those in some ways. We've tried to be responsive to landlords. Are you getting any feedback from the landlord community and from Home Forward as to what the specific barriers people are facing now?
Commissioner, I think it's primarily the barriers of affordable rents that they can find with those units. Home Forward in the city, in partnership, have done a number of different things, including a market rate adjustment, as you know, a few years ago, but the challenge, I think, is always finding units that people with a voucher can afford.
Well, is it your view, in light of the numbers, that we should be more aggressive in looking to project-based Section 8 vouchers?
I think that that can be a huge policy question for Home Forward and a huge fiscal impact. They have moved to doing more project-based over a period of years. They are supporting the Housing Bond with at least 400 units of rent support, which is key, but that said, I think that they are, they and their board are trying to strike the right balance through housing choice and project-based vouchers. I don't know that I would have a definitive opinion at this moment.
I'd like to, if we can, at some point follow up on this, maybe the next time you come by to visit, because, again, you know, once upon a time, with a lot of work, we got above 90% in terms of success rate.
Right.
And if we're in the 70s, it says we've got a lot of headwinds, and it means a lot of people who desperately need housing are unable to find a willing landlord and a successful tenancy, and that's discouraging, and that's also leaving a lot of money on the table. So, thank you.
As several of you know, this is an area I'm greatly interested in. First of all, from East Portland's standpoint, we want to thank you for increasing the amount this last year in spending in East Portland. We have some concerns about the cut for the rental rehab. We understand because the outside forces, that program hasn't been overly successful, and understand putting it into homeownership right now, that that seems like the right thing to do. I noticed in your report, in the CBO's report, the recommendation is in rental rehabilitation and home repair, but it's just mentioning homeownership with the CBO's recommendation and also expanding it outside of East Portland. Portland, East Portland's taken a lot of cuts. We were originally supposed to have 1.5 million going toward East Portland because of the underfunding in housing over time. So by expanding that, and this is not toward you, but more toward Andrew, it's actually increasing in equities. So that's just a statement I want to make. I have a question on the bond projects, and the two you mentioned that are pending. What is the number of units, and what type are units? Are they family units, or what we consider family, two or more bedrooms or less than?
There is a high number of family units. It would be more than 150 units that we're looking at in East Portland presently. One of them is an occupied building, as I mentioned, and the other is a building that is currently being developed but is unoccupied. And both of those units have more than 50% family-sized units, so two bedrooms or greater.
Okay. And you and I, you mentioned that there was a couple of possible, potential projects you were looking at for East Portland. you were looking at for East Portland. Because I'm really concerned, I was on the stakeholder groups and we were looking at a significant amount of places being rehabbed as part of it. And our focus was, East Portland is considered low opportunity but high vulnerability. So the rehab would really be beneficial there. Of those projects, how many units are you talking?
So out of the 150, I just mentioned 100 of them would be rehabilitated buildings. We've had a number of different opportunities in East Portland that we've also been looking at over a period of time. But some of those, we have not been successful in securing.
Okay. You know, I had another question here. One of the things, we were talking about the rents leveling off or declining not being as high, but as you stated, in East Portland, that's not the case. Being on the David Douglas School Board, we noticed that this year, where the prior year homelessness or houselessness from our statistics, statistics we gathered was 400 in March. This year it was over 400 in November, which indicates just more displacement in our area. I've been an advocate for the city to look at our schools. Over a decade ago, PPS experienced rapid declining enrollment. They really were the, the barometer that that gentrification was occurring. I'm seeing the same thing in East Portland. So what is the Housing Bureau doing to assist to prevent the displacement besides these, the small amount of units? Because it is, that's what we're seeing, is displacement in, in East Portland.
Thank you, Frieda. First, I'd like to note that the decrease in rent that, that we're speaking of is actually at the very high end with the new units coming online. So it is not an, an overall decrease in rent that families who are living in Portland are experiencing, but more just, you know, when the average citywide unit is now going for a two-bedroom at 1,700, you know, we're talking about that, that level of rent. We're not talking about, you know, folks who are, who are living broadly in the city, but more of kind of the new, the newer units coming online. They're seeing a lot more vacancies, et cetera. So I just wanted to clarify that, first of all. You know, I think besides looking at the opportunities to build and develop and prevent displacement, I think some of the most important work we're doing has to do with the Office of Renter Services and the newer policies that council is passing, as well as providing legal education services, especially culturally specific and targeted legal education for folks in East Portland to help them retain their housing. People experience a fair amount of housing discrimination or failure to know their rights. And all of those things can keep families housed. Also, I think the rent support that, that you hear about, especially with some of the work that the joint office is doing, is helping keep and prevent displacement as much as we can. But there's definitely more we could do.
We've got a few minutes. So if you would indulge me for a second, could somebody just sort of share more information on the, the new rental registration system and the plans for that? And what the hope is that, that'll come out of that? I gather that one of the things that we hope will come out of it is that there will be a more robust participation in a rental rehabilitation program in the future because they'll need to and will know it. But I would love to get more information on, on the vision for that.
I'll, I'll give you the broad vision and certainly if anybody else wants to chime in, feel free to do so. There have been a lot of conversations about the state of the rental market over the course of the last couple of years here in the city. We all acknowledge there's been significant displacement, particularly at lower income levels. We live in a state that does not allow either rent stabilization or just cause eviction. So is a city council yet. So as a city council, we have been very aggressive in terms of putting forward other policies like the, the rental relocation model. One thing that we have heard both from the tenant's side of the equation and the landlord's side of the equation is that our city has an almost unique lack of quality data on the hydraulics of the rental market. And for example, we're talking now about where is the actual rent relief that we're all hearing about taking place? And we know that, that that is taking place at the top end of the market. But there are many other questions that we cannot answer due to the lack of a quality data system. And so the renter registration, the rental registration process simply asks that we create a mechanism by where rental units are registered and data is collected and disseminated with regard to that information. That helps us build better informed policies around the rental market going forward. And I should say, this is actually one of the, the less controversial aspects of the last year around housing and rental services. As I say, the quality data is something that's being asked for by both landlords and tenants as we make policy. I will go one step further and say, my vision for this is that it becomes self-supporting. It, it is self-supporting in other jurisdictions around the country. And there are many, many, many jurisdictions that have a similar system. I don't know, Shannon, if you wanted to add to that, or Tom, or anybody?
Sounds like a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Commissioner Daley?
So I'm not going to take a strong position on the cut package on rental rehabilitation, but I just want to assert that we need a stick. I've seen photos from our home inspectors, rental inspectors, and the conditions that some of our low-income tenants are living in are horrific and life-threatening. And I don't sympathize with these types of landlords at all. I don't care if they don't want to have to restrict their rents for 10 years in order to get funds to rehabilitate. And in fact, I don't think they should be allowed to raise their rent at all until they are meeting basic life safety standards. That is my suggested stick. And it's something that my office is pursuing and we're hoping, if it's feasible, because as we often find out, we're prohibited from doing common sense things at the state level. But if we're not prohibited, I, I would like the council to seriously, or the bureau and the council to seriously consider that. No one should be profiting in this rental, rental market who's putting people's health and lives at risk.
Very good. Thank you. Oh, sorry.
Do we have any time for another question?
We do. Yes, we have, we have at least three minutes.
Building on the condition of units question, Director Callahan, I want to thank you for your thoughtfulness so far in terms of the asset management piece of the units that we are acquiring and will hold in perpetuity hopefully for Portlanders. Could you talk a little bit with the group about if that thinking is evolving and what else any of us can be doing to help the Housing Bureau in terms of ensuring that those assets have the reserves they need and that they're kept up well, so that any Portlander that moves into them in the next few years, we can assure that they have a good unit?
Thank you. So we have recently at the bureau, with the approval of council, established a intergovernmental agreement with our partner, Home Forward, who is an expert in asset management of affordable housing. This was necessary, we felt, under the housing bond as we bring on more units into city ownership. Prior to the adoption of the housing bond, the city has actually only owned two apartment buildings. And we felt that professional assistance by way of Home Forward would help us manage those buildings quicker, more efficiently, and with expertise that we don't have in-house. We're also greatly appreciate the partnership with the Office of Management and Finance and particularly the CFO's office in helping us with looking at our asset management plans under the bond going forward. So I, I guess I'm looking to OMF to help us as well with that. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Next up, the Joint Office of Homeless Services. Director Jolen, thank you for being here and welcome.
Why not? Man, Trish and Fish is feeling very territorial. I'm going to move, I'm going to move toward you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you for having me, Vice Advisor. Thank you as for proposing to you.
Ah, there we go. So again, for the record, I'm Mark Jolen. I'm the Director of the Joint Office of Homeless Services and I appreciate the opportunity to share with you a little bit, even closer. Okay, it's very loud in my ears. A little bit about our budget proposal. And I have a few more slides than Director Callahan did. I will try to go through them quickly because I can see it's good to leave time for questions. And are we actually in presentation mode here? Doesn't look like it. Oh, is that the issue? All right. Is it? Okay. Well, does that mean you're going to have to manually advance it because it's a PDF? All right. So this is what I'm proposing to talk to, to you about today and we'll just jump right over that. The Joint Office of Homeless Services, as most of you know, was formed about 18 months ago, a little more than 18 months ago now to implement the Home for Everyone kind of shared community strategies around ending homelessness, as well as to do the work of getting the city and county general funds that are allocated to homelessness out into the community. So much of what guides our work is what guides a Home for Everyone, starting with this shared vision that no one should be homeless and everyone needs a safe and stable place to call home. Our budget prioritization process, again, starts with the core values that underlie all of the work of a Home for Everyone. And that is that we start by prioritizing our most vulnerable populations. We promote racial and ethnic justice. We use data-driven assessments and accountability to guide our investments. We engage and involve the community and in particular, people with lived experience of homelessness throughout the process. And then we're always looking for opportunities to strengthen our system capacity and increase leverage opportunities. Because we are the creation of an intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county, our budget process is a little bit complicated. We go through the entirety of the county's budget process as well as the entirety of the city's budget process. This slide is an illustration of that. The only thing I really want to draw your attention to quickly here is the community engagement side of our budgeting process is in the orange boxes. So we use our Home for Everyone workgroups as a starting point for discussion about what, what we prioritize in our community around addressing homelessness and our coordinating board, which has about 34 appointed members. And as recommendations come forward, we bring them to the Executive Committee of a Home for Everyone as well. Commissioner Udaly and the mayor both sit on that committee. As we look at what we need to invest in in terms of addressing homelessness, part of what we obviously have to take into consideration is the, the drivers of homelessness. And as you all know very well, the principal driver in our community of rates of homelessness comes down to the growing disparity between what it costs to afford housing in our community and what our lowest income residents have available to them to pay for rent. So here you see the SSI benefit right now. Someone who is severely and long-term disabled has a cash benefit coming to them of $750 a month maximum. And what you see on the right side, those right three bars, are the average rents from the Housing Bureau State of Housing Report for 2016 for studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom units. We have 21,000 people on SSI in Multloma County. You see also the monthly average social security check as compared to rent levels and what remains or doesn't of anyone's income if they're trying to find housing in our market. I can tell you that estimates are that we have about 100,000 people over 65 in our community. And the ARP estimated that three out of 10 people over 65 in our community are living only on their social security benefit. So that gives you a sense of how many households we're talking about there. And then the final bar you see is the income from minimum wage. If you're working full-time, not adjusted for taxes and what remains. So even in a studio apartment, if you're working full-time minimum wage, you only have $590 a month remaining to pay for everything other than your housing expenses. And of course, we know that all of these dynamics are particularly present and more so present for all of our communities of color. Beyond that, we of course look to our trend data on need. And one of the places we look there is what's going on under our point-in-time count. So between 2015 and 2017, some of the things that stood out for all of us, I think, one was that homelessness, despite our significant efforts in this community, rose by about 10% to 4,177 people, even though we saw our unsheltered population go down by 11.6%. As you all have heard, compared to other cities that are going through similar market forces, we're doing better, but we're still seeing the numbers of people on our streets rise and are experiencing homelessness rise. We saw the most pronounced increase in the chronic homeless population. It was up 24% to 1,290 individuals. And 71% of those individuals remain unsheltered. It's the highest rate we see in unsheltered population. Women were up 16% to 1,355 people. People with disabilities were up 16% to 2,527 of the people counted. So more than 50% of the folks who are homeless in our community are living with one or more disabilities. And we saw the number of people who've been homeless longer than two years climb from 23% to 32% of the total population. Finally, while the percentage of the population made up of communities of color fell slightly, it still was 37% of the overall homeless population. Communities of color continue to be significantly overrepresented in our homeless population. We don't, as we work on, I'm sorry, the question?
Sorry, I just have a quick question. You don't have a number for seniors broken out in this needs trend?
I don't, although there was a small uptick in the number of people over 55, but it wasn't dramatic. It was in this low single digits. So that is a trend, but it isn't yet the kind of dramatic trend we're seeing in some of the other parts.
Okay, thank you.
So we're looking at need data and then, you know, we're understanding homelessness as a, as a dynamic set of interventions. It's not one strategy, one approach, that is going to help us drive down the number of people experiencing homelessness in our community. And this slide is really an illustration of sort of what our options are as a community when we think about our strategies. So if we have this person in the red, red circle at the top in the prevention bucket, one way to keep them from becoming homeless or being homeless on our streets is to help them keep the housing that they have. That's obviously the best strategy we can take for them. And often financially, that's the best investment. If that is not an option, we invest in diversion. We want to move that person from the permanent housing they're losing into another better housing situation directly without them ever having to become homeless. If neither of those two are an option for that person, they may find themselves on the street. And then still our priority is to first get them back into permanent housing. So we need to be investing in projects that get people from the streets directly back into permanent housing whenever possible. If that's not an option for somebody, then we want to make a shelter bed available for them. And as a community, you'll see, we've invested a lot in additional shelter. But shelter doesn't end anybody's homelessness. And so with all those people who are in shelter, we also have to be investing in moving them from shelter into housing to free up those shelter beds for the people who are still outside, so they get the shelter, and to reduce the amount of homelessness in our community. For each population who we serve then, we have a systematic set of investments that we need to make in prevention, in diversion, in housing placement, and in shelter. The two boxes that weren't on the previous slide that I want to make sure you see, we also have to invest in coordinated access and outreach. How do we get people access to the services that we have? How do we give them the information that they need? How do we help them get connected to services? And then we know people don't just need housing and rent assistance and housing placement support. They often need healthcare supports and employment supports. In the Joint Office, we're overseeing that work for our families and children, for youth up to age 25, for domestic violence survivors, and for adults, including singles, men and women, couples with disabilities, elderly folks, and veterans. And then finally, of course, we're looking at our data and we're looking at our outcomes. We're setting goals for our outcomes. We have performance measures that I haven't got up here, all of them, but HUD requires us to have certain performance measures. But we often we often talk in terms of some core outcome measures that we report to the community on a regular basis. And those are essentially, how many people are we preventing from becoming homeless? How many people are we helping move out of homelessness back into permanent housing? And for those, again, who we don't have that option for, how many folks are we providing emergency shelter to? And what you can see is, over the last several years, we've set goals in each of these areas, and we've managed to exceed those goals. I'm gonna keep moving quickly, just because we'll run out of time otherwise, but I'm happy to come back to some of those specific outcome measures as I go through the budget presentation. But in total, our investments in this past year helped about 30,000 people with some level of support. You had over 8,000 people who were prevented from becoming homeless, almost 6,000 who were able to move back into permanent housing, and over 8,000 individuals who accessed shelter, unduplicated. Sorry, I think I gave you too high a prevention number. The prevention number last year was 6,139. And as you can see, the trends are going up across the board. As we've made additional investments, we've seen the outcomes grow, as you would expect. So the budget that we've submitted is a total budget of about $61 million. It's a current service-level budget. Through all of the work that we did with our community partners, the clear message was sustain the existing capacity. The need is growing. We know that, and of course, if there are additional resources available, we can use them, but let's start with maintaining this set of investments that we have committed to in our community. And that's $58.5 million of the total investments. And to be clear for you, that's not the city, so our budget is a combined budget, and what we've broken out for you in the bar graphs is the amount of money that is coming from city general fund, county general fund, and other sources. So you'll see that in this proposed budget, a little over $28 million is coming in city general fund. That's the orange bar there. This slide also shows how the investments are broken out. So for permanent housing, supportive housing, and housing placement, you're seeing about 31 million or 30, sorry, 51% of our budget's there, and I'll come back to these in subsequent slides, and about 35% is going to shelter, safety off the streets.
Before you move on, I thought that we started off being city and county, it's about the same.
No. So when we formed the Joint Office, there was an existing differential in terms of what the city and the county were each investing in homeless services as they are in our office, and then you each added an equivalent amount over the top of that with those Home for Everyone investments of $10 million each. So there's always been a distinction. One of the pieces of work that our office doesn't do is the prevention side of the work, and so, and I'll show you in a subsequent slide, but the prevention dollars that the county invests are at the Department of County Human Services. But yeah, we've always been sort of unequal as a starting point, and then as we've added, we've tried to add equivalent over the years.
On the slide you have City of Gresham, do they contribute?
The City of Gresham doesn't currently contribute general funds.
You just got the placement on the slide.
The place, yeah, yeah. So, so let me move on. So I'll just call it here, because it doesn't come out anywhere else. So our administration expense with this budget would be about 5% of our total budget. So 95% of the dollars that come into our office are going back out into the community to nonprofits that actually do the service delivery. So these are the big categories, and I want to be real clear that some of these numbers that are in the blue columns are really just illustrative of the kinds of services that we're buying and the scale. It is not comprehensive of everything that we're purchasing with the dollar amounts in these buckets. But system support, access, and coordination, this really is what I was talking about, is like, how do people know about the services? How do we get people connected to services? We fund 2-on-1 info. They take about 7,000 contacts a month from people seeking service. And you can see in this bar graph that in the last, in the most recent quarter in 2017, they received 10, over 10,000 calls for housing-related services. This is also where we fund coordinated access. So when we have a scarce number of resources in any system, and we have a scarce number of resources in every system, we have to coordinate access to those to make sure that the folks who are most vulnerable are getting priority access to those limited resources. And so in our adult system, we introduced a new coordinated access process for access to permanent supportive housing. We did over 1,000 assessments already this year. We have coordinated access in our family system, in our youth system, and in our domestic violence system as well. Safety off the streets is the next, and this is, as I said, about 30% of our budget. It's $21 million that are going to run shelter. And again, this is shelter not just for singles, but for youth, domestic violence survivors, families, veterans. All told, we're funding about 1,370 year-round shelter beds for all of those populations, and in addition, about 595 winter shelter beds with these resources. You can see here that last year, an unduplicated 8,532 people accessed emergency shelter in our community. Here we do have one additional request for funding, a new funding ask. It's for $505,000 to allow us to enhance the services and infrastructure for our alternative shelters. These are places like Dignity Village, Kenton Women's Village, Right to Dream. Our single biggest investment area is in supportive housing and housing placement. It's $31 million. And again, this runs the range of rent assistance, housing case managers, helping people move into housing, and then also the work that it takes and the resources it takes to help people who are in housing stay housed. Last year, just on the placement side, that's not the retention number, we were able to help 4,889 people make the transition back into permanent housing, and 66% of those folks were people of color. We've launched the local long-term voucher program, which was part of the budget this past year, and we've got over 23 households already in on those long-term local vouchers, and we'll be fully leased up in the 45 placements very soon. And here we do have one additional ask. Actually, we have two. One is on the county side only, and it's a 24-month voucher for families who are longest-term shelter stayers. As we're going through stabilizing the family system, this is a need we've identified. We have some families who've been in shelter many months, returned to shelter year after year, and while we have about 200 dedicated Section 8 vouchers for families in our system, we don't have enough, and this will allow us to move a good number of those families out. We've also asked, sorry?
How many more vouchers?
This would represent about 25, 24-month vouchers is the request. It's $600,000. And then we've also asked for an adjustment in overall rent assistance of $350,000, split between the city and the county. It would just allow us to ensure that we don't lose ground on the number of people we're able to place, given the continued increases in rents for our lowest-income households in the community. That affects about 175 households. And then finally, we put about $4.1 million into the budget for diversion and employment services. Diversion, as I mentioned, is a critical strategy to help people avoid becoming homeless in the first place. Here, we're investing in diversion out of hospitals, diversion out of the criminal justice system, diversion at the door of shelters, and also diversion back into communities where someone has an identified housing option. Because of our family situation, family system situation on the county side, we did ask for another $370,000 to expand diversion. And then the employment investments have been really exceptional in terms of the outcomes that they achieved. We put this bar graph in for you, because we made an investment last year in a combination of rent assistance and employment services. What you see here are the outcomes. The difference for families in terms of the wage coming out of the program, what they were earning if they had rent assistance that helped them stabilize in their housing versus if they didn't. And you can see that it's a difference on a per-household basis of over $10,000 a year. In terms of our investment, the increased wages of those families by themselves were brought in twice as much money as we spent on the program. So we do have a request in here, again, it's on the county side, to add another $200,000, so that all the families participating in that employment program have access to rent assistance. Our expected reduction, 5%. Ours is a balanced system. You can't take $888,000 out of one place and not cause unintended negative consequences for other parts of the system. So our proposal was to take proportionate cuts in shelter, in housing placement, and in some support services. So you can see here what the impact would be. And then finally, we have our family system by the numbers. So this is just one illustration of how our budget breaks out when you look at it through the lens of a particular group of people needing support. An investment in shelter for families of $2.2 million, and diversion of $800,000, and so forth and so on. And there isn't magic. There isn't a formula that I can apply that says this is exactly the right proportion of funding in each of these buckets, but it does represent intentional strategic work on the part of the Home for Everyone work groups, and the Homeless Family System of Cares Oversight Group that routinely looks at budget and how resources are being allocated and makes recommendations. And here, on the unmet need front, of course, we're tracking unmet need across the populations, but on families, we have 600 families right now in the queue looking for permanent housing assistance. 2-on-1 is getting about 1,000 calls a month for, just for rent assistance, emergency rent assistance. And of course, we know that we have hundreds of families on the waitlist for shelter right now. So our priorities going into '19, we had an audit this year on the county side, and we're prioritizing their findings regarding data access quality and reporting. Data was something that the Budget Office also raised in their report, and I appreciate that. We're gonna put a good amount of effort into that in partnership with DCHS and PHB. We have to reprocure all of our adult system, so we just finished a reprocurement of all of the money that goes into families. And on the county side, we have a requirement to reprocure all the resources that are going into the adult system, shelter, placement, supportive housing, this coming year. That's gonna be a lot of work, but it's also an opportunity for us to think through how we're allocating resources in that system and design that system more effectively. We have our regional and local supportive housing plans that we need to finalize and begin to implement. We've just developed a chronic homelessness framework that we will also be working to implement. We have some struggles in the family system right now, just in terms of the overwhelming demand from families. We're gonna work to address that, and then we're committed to improving our equity work, both within a Home for Everyone and within the Joint Office.
So I have a question. So you have heard me state a preference, and this is not a guarantee, but a preference that we, for the most part, hold the Joint Office harmless in this budget reduction exercise. So let's just play a thought game. Let's take off the table for a moment, the 5% cuts, the horror story you just laid out. You have a couple of ad packages, including one that's very specific to the city of Portland. One of the good news situations that came out of the legislative session was we went down there, we lobbied hard for the document recording fee to be increased, which it was. We went down there with the chair and argued for additional dollars to shore up the family shelter system. Would it be safe to assume that you could purchase some of these asks, given that we now have additional sources of funding? Or where would you propose those sources of funding go?
So I don't know yet what the impact of the document recording fee is going to be on us. How, so only a small percentage of the doc recording fee goes into the homeless-specific allocations, and then we get a percentage of that in Multnomah County. So I don't know what that looks like yet, but certainly that, when that comes, that will be an opportunity for us to expand shelter capacity in our community with those dollars, and/or rent assistance, depending on how we choose to use them. The dollars that came to us from the governor were specific to addressing the family shelter need, and as you know, we have this tax title fund that the county, in our budget, and we had a three-year plan, because it's, that's one-time funding, to spend that out to expand family, the family system. Because of the crisis we faced in our family shelter, with the numbers just being so high, and our commitment to not turning any families away, we had to spend a significant amount of that dollar upfront. So we're looking at those dollars coming in from the governor's office as a way to realize the commitments we made to expand the family system, in particular, in next fiscal year. So right now, I don't see those dollars creating an opportunity to do something on the alternative shelter side, in particular, because those alternative shelters really are serving singles, right? Those, the sort of pop-up shelter villages are all serving singles only at the moment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Rob, did you, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Saltzman, then, Rob?
I was just curious what the...
Oh, thanks.
What the current status is of the Human Solutions Family Shelter that had the roof collapse or whatever?
Yeah.
Yeah, what's going on?
So, so the, Human Solutions is the owner of that building, and the county made an investment to help them acquire it. So with the closure, both Human Solutions and Multnomah County have brought in people to do a capital needs assessment on that building to determine what it would take to get that building back up to where we could feel good about having people living in it. That process is underway. We haven't seen any numbers yet to give us an indication of how significant investment would be. Human Solutions, I think, has all along had a vision, and we did too, of that being only a temporary site for homeless families, with the idea being that that land might be redeveloped as affordable housing within a reasonable amount of time. So that's part of the discussion as well. And critically important, all of the families who had to leave that building have been relocated into motels, and they're in two different motels. So Human Solutions has been able to take the staffing resources that they were using in that family center and provide support services onsite at the motels to the families. So we're looking at that building. I think there's a lot of interest in, given how long families are staying in shelter, longer than anyone had expected and certainly wants, that finding arrangements where they have more privacy than they were able to have in that setting is probably desirable. So we're in the midst of that planning process right now.
Okay, thank you.
Rob?
Thank you. So I was wondering about the 4889 number for placements on Slide 10. If you could break that down for us to, in terms of what we're seeing on Slide 8. So the street-to-housing percentage and the shelter-to-housing percentage, because I gather that the top box, prevention, corresponds to the 6139 figure. So I'm wondering, of the 4889 that are in the placements, how many of those people are going straight from street to housing, and how many of them are going from shelters to housing? And what percentages that reflects those populations, if you have it?
I don't, but I can get it for you. So that, you're right about the 4889 being essentially the, you know, street-to-housing, shelter-to-housing. In our family system, we do move families who are doubled up and highly vulnerable into permanent housing from those doubled-up situations. That shows up in that 4889 number, too. So, but I don't have it broken out by, I don't have it broken out by population right in front of me. So I can get that, I can get that to you.
So your mentioning of doubled up makes me wonder, because when I look at the top number from Page 7 for the overall homeless population of 4177, does that include doubled-up people? Because I was on the impression that it didn't, right?
No.
So we're kind of talking about different populations here. I mean, populations confronted by the same crisis, but still. What does that, what does that number look like on Slide 7 in terms of the homeless population if you include the doubled-up folks?
So I appreciate you asking the question and calling that out, because I should have said it. So those numbers are all the HUD definition of homelessness, which is a little, is narrow, and it doesn't, for example, align with the school district's definition of homelessness, which does include people who are doubled up. So we don't have a perfect number, unfortunately, to count doubled up, but the best we've been able to come up with using school data and TANF data and things like that is that it's at least four to one. So you're probably, the number is closer to 16,000 a night. And again, all these numbers are conservative. You hear all kinds of estimates about how big an undercount our point-in-time count is, but it's definitely an undercount, and 16,000 is probably a conservative number. And again, that would be on any given night. So you're right that, in terms of how we invest on the family, because it is disproportionately families who find themselves doubled up. It's why, in the family system, we use the broader definition of homelessness as a matter of policy, and are able to pick up a good number of families who are doubled, not just doubled up, but doubled up in unsustainable or unsafe situations, right? So there are some doubled-up situations that can be maintained, and we'd like to give everybody access to their own, you know, permanent housing unit, but we don't have the resources for that. So we have to, we have to prioritize within that population.
And just one final follow-up, which is, Director Jolyn, do you, in looking at the crisis in our houseless population with the existing, what we know about new housing stock coming online, particularly affordable housing stock, and pressure in the rental market, do you foresee this problem getting worse before it gets better?
Wow, that's a good question. I mean, I think the sort of conditions around us that we don't have control over, what's happening at the federal government, what continues to happen in our market, suggests that it, you know, it's likely gonna continue to affect more... that it, you know, it's likely going to continue to affect more people rather than less in our community. How well we do it, you know, making our investments targeted, how we're able to work through the production processes that PHB is working so hard on, is going to determine just what that looks like. You know, in our community, at least according to some research from, from the Zillow Research folks, we were one of a handful of communities where the per capita rate of homelessness actually declined in the last, between 2011, 2016. A lot of our partner cities, it went up. But in terms of just the sheer numbers of people who are going to be faced with homelessness, I, I think it's going to continue to be a big challenge.
Mark, can I, can I ask a few questions? First of all, what's the average cost of placing an individual in a shelter bed per day?
Someone do the math. The, I think it comes, what I can tell you is that the range, because our shelters differ and the populations differ, I think our range for per-bed, per-night, per-year costs is anywhere from about $8,000 to $12,000.
Okay. And so the reason I asked, I started with a shelter bed, is that I think sometimes, look, the aggregate data in your report and the outcomes are fantastic, so congratulations and thank you for an excellent report. I think what's sometimes missing in our conversation with the public is, if we had an extra dollar, where would we spend it and why? And I wonder if, following this hearing, you could send us some, some additional data points and try to quantify sort of the average cost of placing someone in a shelter bed, the average cost of preventing someone from experiencing homelessness, so when we put short-term rent assistance in and we make that investment, and the average cost of getting someone into a permanent placement. Because I think the numbers, I think, help tell a story, a very compelling story. And I think what we've known over time is that, that short-term rent assistance dollar is really one of our most powerful tools, and if we can prevent someone from becoming homeless, that's a great outcome. So if you could give us sort of, you know, some, some numbers, even if they're just estimates, but I think it's important, as we make forced choices, to know, you know, where do we get the biggest return for our investment? The second thing I wanted to ask you is, following up on what I asked the Housing Director, what's your number in terms of the current shortage of housing units at 0% to 30% MFI?
I think our number is the same number that the, that the Housing Bureau has. I mean, we're all working with the same data, so, and I didn't come with the most current data in mind. I think Director Callahan provided a number. You know, we're, we're tens of thousands of units short. I think we know that, and it's, that will continue to be, be our biggest challenge.
And I think, to the question that someone raised earlier, I mean, over 95% of the housing coming online in our community is either market or luxury. It's not housing that the population that you're addressing is ever going to have access to, so that's, that's why we need robust subsidies. You made the observation that unlike some peer cities, we've seen a decline in the number of people outside, per capita.
Per capita and the number of unsheltered.
Well, it has to be per capita to be meaningful, so it's per capita. So let's take Los Angeles for an example. Los Angeles is six times our population, roughly. They've committed to spending just under $5 billion to address homelessness. Today, they have twice as many people per capita classified as homeless than we do. They're at 55, going to 60,000%, and they've seen a 75% increase in six years. What's, just in very broad strokes, what's different about our approach compared to Los Angeles's approach?
That is hard to answer, because I don't, I'm not, you know, I don't, I'm confident that, that Los Angeles, because they're a peer community and we learn from each other, has many of the same strategies in place and has done many of the same things that we're, we're doing here. I do think the fact that we've been as intentional about our planning effort, not just for the last three years under A Home for Everyone, but also prior to that, under the 10-year plan, where we made a commitment to supportive housing and created thousands of units of supportive housing, and created the short-term rent assistance pool, and brought providers together around a shared vision, the fact that we have sort of sustained that and we're a community that works as well together as we do, and I'm not saying Los Angeles doesn't, but I think our intentionality around sort of being at the table together, saying this is what we have, this is what we're up against, where do we put our dollars, what investments work, and listening to folks on the street, really understanding the importance of investing in the vision that people who are out on the streets have for themselves. When they tell us, this is my path off the street, we figure out how to invest in that, I think we get good outcomes as a result, and we're able to push back more effectively against some of these really significant headwinds that we have in our community. But again, you know, all that said, we still saw homelessness go up by 10%, so we have, we have more than enough work to do.
Thank you.
If I could just add to the list, so I have said many times that the budgetary contributions are not sustainable, not because we don't support the work of the Joint Office, we strongly support the work, and not because we don't want to. We understand that homelessness is a significant issue in our community, and we're committed to addressing it. But the reality is, at some point, this city will go back into a recessionary environment, and it is very hard to continue to hold harmless the Joint Office, given that. So as you look out five to seven years, what kinds of strategies should we be thinking about to ensure that we can continue to make the kinds of investments, or even increase the investments, so we can add some of the services that you've made a good case for? What should we be looking towards in the future?
Well, I think this is, this is a place where we can learn from Los Angeles and some, some other communities that have sought both local and expanded state-level dedicated revenue streams to support not just the development of housing, but also the support services that people need. And I think it's a, it's a central part of the work that we're doing around our supportive housing plan development, is think, to think through, what's the scale that we need, both to invest adequately in, in the 0% to 30% housing stock, and also in the support services that it's going to take to get people stabilized in housing. I think that's going to be a really important conversation, not just locally, but regionally and at the state level as well.
Very good. And I would strongly encourage people to read a very provocative article that has just popped up in The Guardian, and it raises the question about whether this is like the Vietnam War. In other words, is this an unwinnable war? So I'd ask you the question, is this an unwinnable war?
No. I think this is a homelessness, the way we're experiencing it, you know, we can put an end to it, but we will need the support of the federal government. We, we cannot win it by ourselves, we can't win it even at the state level, but we know, and this is, this is what's been so hard for all of us that invested so much in the national effort to end veterans homelessness, is it illustrated for us that if the federal government comes to the table with the dollars proportionate to the need, then with a combination of those dollars and our state and local investments, we can get to a point where we are functionally ending homelessness for veterans, for families, for youth, for adults with disabilities. But until that time, you know, we will have a system that meets the needs of a lot of people, but is not scaled, no matter how good the strategies are, we can't scale them enough to meet the level of need that's out there.
I would agree with that, and thank you for saying that, because I, I think that's a key component of the next five to seven-year cycle. And that article, by the way, is all about Los Angeles, so it's really interesting in that it, it takes a look at LA. But we have to be more direct in our approach, particularly with the federal government on housing support, addiction support, mental health services, and other services that are critical to success at the local level. We have to be honest with the public. We're going to do everything we can, we're going to fight aggressively to end homelessness, but we cannot realistically do it with the federal government being not only not a participant, but in many regards, working against us to get it done.
Thank you, Mark, and thank you for saying no. I believe that, even though my staff do not believe the same. I have a couple of questions. One is, what are we looking at, or what are we trying to learn from Salt Lake City? I understand that they are more successful at ending homelessness than most of the cities in the West Coast.
They're actually more successful at branding and marketing. That's a good question, but really...
Their skiing is good. So, yeah, so, so they, they made a one-time, very significant investment in permanent supportive housing that created a one-time significant reduction in chronic homelessness, and that was, you know, I think, to be celebrated, and it's the kind of thing, you know, we want to do here as well. And the reality is that since they made that one-time investment, because of the nature of homelessness, which is that it's a continuing crisis, even as we house people, new people become homeless, they are now facing an enormous homelessness crisis in Salt Lake City, and have come to visit us to ask what we're doing here, and, and are, you know, it's, it's the number one top priority for their local elected officials. They've got major issues around livability that they're trying to address. So this, this is not an issue that any community, any local community can solve. We can all learn from each other and do better with the scarce resources that we have, and we should learn from each other. But I'm always skeptical if, if any one place or one idea gets held up as sort of the thing, we, if we did it, it would solve the problem. I've never found that to be true.
And what's the indicator for chronically homeless?
So the HUD definition of chronic homelessness is that you've either been homeless for a year continuously, or four times or more in a three-year period, and you have one or more significant life-limiting disabilities. That can include a mental health, physical health, or addiction disorder. Locally, we have a little bit, a little more flexible definition, because we know that, we know that there are folks with significant support service and deep affordability needs, who might not technically fit the definition of chronic homelessness, but very much need to be part of our strategy for delivering those kinds of supportive housing resources to folks, or they're going to wind up becoming chronically homeless if they're not already.
Thank you. And you didn't mention children in the statistic of homelessness.
So, I didn't mention children in, oh, in the stats. That's because in the 2017 point in time, we didn't actually see a significant increase. We were pretty stable with the number of families. What we did see, because of the no-turn-away policy for families, was a pretty significant decrease in unsheltered families and kids. But in the system, we still served, I think, 5,700 kids last year under the age of 18. So it's, it's very much a need out there. It just doesn't show up. And again, family is definitely one of those populations where the point-in-time count doesn't do a great job of capturing it, because we know families are so disproportionately doubled up, and it's also one of the reasons that we don't have a lot of confidence in the racial disparity information, ultimately, that it's, that it's adequate in the point-in-time, because we know that families that are doubled up tend to be disproportionately families of color. So there are lots of reasons not to get too invested in the point-in-time count data. It's some of the best data we have, and it is imperfect.
I have a last one.
Yeah.
Veterans.
Yes.
How are we doing after our one-time investment?
So we're, we're continuing to house a lot of veterans, but we had some 400 veterans still experiencing homelessness. So, you know, again, that system is much closer now to the scale that you need to offer veterans as they become homeless a housing option, but we haven't seen the kind of sort of continued scale of federal investment that it would take to maintain our, our achievements there. So we're working really hard to do everything we can with that, with that resource, and there's money in our budget here locally to continue the work. And we did get the, a renewal of the current grants from, from the federal government, so that's good. That means we can at least sustain the capacity. So there's progress there, but it's still not a perfect system.
So thank you very much for all of your work. Thank you to you and your team. I think it's really commendable that you've served more people than you were planning to, and that you're continuing to use this data-driven approach. I particularly liked the slide on, on Slide 15 with the rent assisted versus the comparison and the employment training, and that is obviously what we need to be doing more of. Just, could you tell me how in your assessment, the coordination with the cleanup team has been going, and what opportunities there are that for us to do that part better?
Yeah. So over the last, it's coming up on a year now, we have tried to be much more coordinated, and not just the Joint Office, but all of our outreach teams that are out there in the field, with all of the agencies that are doing the public space management and the camp cleanup, so the police and P-Bot and parks, there's, there's a, every morning at 8 o'clock on Fridays, we're on the phone together. The city does, is very transparent about, you know, what areas are going to be cleaned up, so we know what is sort of officially slated to be cleaned, but we, it's also an opportunity for everybody to talk about areas that are emerging as problem areas, or people that they've seen out in the field who they're concerned about. So it's a very productive conversation. And where we've seen a lot of benefit is when, you know, Portland Police Bureau has their Neighborhood Response Team and has their car that has folks that go out with mental health outreach workers and sort of engage together, and the Sheriff's Office now has their HOPE Team, and those are specialized officers, and they work directly with outreach workers. So there's been a lot of benefit in that kind of skill-building and relationship-building amongst the outreach teams and the public safety officers. In our budget, there is one adjustment that, that we're making to our budget. It's not a new ask, but we're actually going to field a team of three outreach workers who are really just service navigators, and partner them up in each of the police precincts, whose primary job it will be to engage when an area is going to be posted and cleaned up. The difference there is that we haven't historically done outreach that way. Our outreach teams have been primarily funded to do permanent housing placement. So they do the work of engagement around the camps, but, but they're not as able to be in multiple places, you know, on a given day, because once they've engaged with somebody, they're working to get them into housing, and that takes a lot of their time. So all of those partners who've been on the phone every Friday morning, they're, they're feeling like, you know, this is an important collaboration, but we've also heard it would be good to have a team that's dedicated to that part of the work, so they can more efficiently put their time towards the housing placement and stabilization work.
Thank you.
Frida?
Being in East Portland, I'm reading the news and, and questions come up by the community, and I know that you're planning or hope to plan having a shelter on Foster. How many is that going to serve?
So the Foster shelter, I think, we're hoping we can accommodate about 120 people there, but it, yeah.
Okay. The one on 122nd and Gleason, that is run by Transition Projects, I believe, that was supposed to be temporary, because of zoning, and there's rumblings that that's going to be closing. Are you looking at that happening? It's not the best building to have people in. Looking at that closing when the Foster opens, or are you looking at another shelter opening?
So ever since we opened Hanson, which, which we, which is the one on 122nd and Gleason, we knew it was not a long-term site. The building just wouldn't sustain it. It wasn't purpose-built for that, it was old, so we really weren't able to make a lot of the capital improvements you would want in a permanent year-round shelter. So we've been actively looking to replace that capacity in the, in the community. So been trying to figure out how to add 200 beds of more high-quality year-round shelter, and so the Foster would, would be part of that capacity. We've also, as you likely know, been looking at a potential new shelter in Old Town that would also provide some of that capacity. So the plan remains to, to close Hanson down as soon as we're confident that we're not losing capacity in the, in the community for, for that critical adult shelter.
And one thing on budget, as Joe pointed out, Gresham, they're on the front page as supportive of your slide.
Oh, I see, that was, that was the reference, that's probably, yeah.
But it appears in the budget, it's Portland and the county that is really, besides your other sources. I'm assuming, because you're county-wide, you're also servicing Gresham, Troutdale, Fairview, Wood Village. Are they giving you some kind of in-kind support, because it seems like we're picking up their share as well, instead of them picking it up?
So you're right on all counts. So Gresham is there because Gresham is part of the Executive Committee of A Home for Everyone, and is part of our community planning effort. So Commissioner Echols sits on the Executive Committee, there's a designee from the city of Gresham who participates in all of our planning work, and we've had members of the faith community and others from Gresham come to the table and, and help us sort of strategize for how to better serve East County. So the smaller jurisdictions don't currently contribute funding into our budget. Gresham does leverage some of their general fund and federal dollars, so they've got a, we fund some outreach and they fund some dedicated police officers, and there are a variety of ways in which our investment... and there are a variety of ways in which our investments are leveraging Gresham resources. I'm not aware of anything similar with the smaller cities. And I think the in-kind is also in the contribution of a variety of types of effort. We, a lot of shelters that we don't fund out there, they get a lot of support from the Gresham community and the East Multnomah County community, a lot of projects that aren't ours necessarily, but do absolutely add value. So, My Father's House, for example, is a really critical sheltering resource in Gresham for families. We don't fund them, but they draw a lot of support from the Gresham community. So, you know, I don't know if that helps put it in context, but right now, we're not seeing direct funding into our office from those smaller cities.
And you mentioned the amount of families that is in greatly in need. How are you, I know at one time, your commission, your public body, whatever you want to call it, it didn't have any school personnel on it, because I did see a request out there seeking members who had school knowledge. Have you included that knowledge? Because they can be such a great partner, someone from the school environment who can explain the intersections and the impacts.
So, we don't, we didn't get anybody in that solicitation from, to the coordinating board.
You actually did, because I applied.
Oh.
Never heard, never heard back, but I applied because I do have that joint.
Well, let's, that, let's talk.
Why not?
My apologies. So, let's chat after this. I'm happy to talk.
So, we're going to run out of time.
I just will say that especially on the family shelter side and the family system side, lots of active engagement with the school districts.
So, I promised Pam when we could talk about this for days, but we're going to have to wrap it up. Pam?
Well, Frida stole my question. She always steal those cool questions from me. But I also just wanted to say that I really appreciate, I don't have a lot of experience or knowledge about homelessness issues, other than what I'm seeing in the newspaper and in discussions here. No, not any real background in it. So, I really do appreciate the way that these reports have been put together, and your slideshows, both you and the Housing Bureau, on all of these issues. I think they really help us learn more about that, and I appreciate that, and I hope that you'll keep doing that, so that I can increase my knowledge of that. So, thank you.
Happy to. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you all very much for your time.
Appreciate it. So, next up, we have the Legal Department, the Office of the City Attorney. And colleagues, we're obviously working through lunch. If people, you know, this is casual, so if people want to eat at the table, there's no problem with that.
Except for the video.
Yeah.
City attorney?
But we're only 15 minutes, so.
So, our Legal Department charges this by the 15 minutes, so let's keep moving. Director Reese, thank you for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Directors, and Budget Committee Members. So, as a smaller bureau, we have five minutes to do our presentation. And I can talk fast, but I don't think I can cover everything that's on this piece of paper in five minutes.
You take as much as you need.
Well, what I actually thought I would do is focus on a couple of areas. One is why we hope you won't take the 5% cut, and we're pleased that the Budget Office recommended against it. And then I'd like to briefly address our two ad packages, which the Budget Office also recommended against. We had proposed for our 5% cut package hesitantly, the Legal Records Management Program. And that's a program that you all funded three or four years ago that has enabled us to implement the GovQA system to manage public records, our legal hold system to manage litigation records, the SMART system to do text archiving and social media archiving. We have an attorney dedicated to that, running that program, who's Jennifer Johnston. We have a paralegal, Carrie Wilton, who's also working full-time, as well as some additional staff. To get to that 5% cut without actually cutting even more core legal services than public records management, legal records management is just not possible. And especially with the direction to hold revenue-generating programs harmless, because the other thing we would have looked at, again reluctantly for a cut, would have been the collections work. So, we hope you will concur with the City Budget Office that all of the progress we've made in that public records management is important, drastically reduces legal risk to the city, and should be continued. The two areas where we've asked for additional staff is in our professional support staff. And for the last several years, I've come before you and asked for additional paralegal and legal assistance support, and in the past, for additional attorney support. We've gotten the additional attorney support in the past. Somehow, we have not gotten, perhaps because it's just not very sexy to ask for paralegals and legal assistance. But they are really, really key professionals for us to be able to do our work cost-effectively. And we have two areas where they could make a tremendous difference. One is our contracts review. We have to review virtually every contract that the city enters into. In '06, '07, that was 5,055 contracts. And for '17, '18, our estimate is 10,900. So, the work has more than doubled. We still have two attorneys that do essentially all of that work. One of our attorneys that does the technology contracting review, and one that does everything else. And as you can imagine, with that workload increase, they are simply overloaded. They're also pinch points for us, being able to be timely and responsive to your offices and the bureaus. And our most cost-effective solution for that is to add a paralegal to that team who would be able to do a lot of the more routine contract review, insurance certificates, all of the things that need to be there to protect the city, and could free up our attorney who does most of the rest of the contract review, to cross-train, and also have some capacity on technology contracting review. And I will tell you that the CFO, independently of this request, had come to me and said she was really concerned that that technology contracting was a pinch point, and would be as she continues to re-envision the procurement function. So, we think that adding a paralegal that can do highly skilled, high-volume work on some of the more routine contracting matters would allow us to much more cost-effectively use our attorney resources, and continue to be very timely on those contract reviews. And I think the City Budget Office was generally sympathetic about the request, but their negative was that they didn't think it supported the mayor's priorities. And we may have not done a good job of showing why it does, in fact. But if you look at the priority areas of increased housing options, reduce homelessness, maintain critical infrastructure, enhance livability, increase public safety and police accountability, and pursue innovation in strengthening resiliency, I can name contractings, contracts that occur in each one of those areas and are absolutely crucial. We can't, you know, build more housing without contracts. We can't do innovation strategies. Our tech attorney recently spent a lot of time working on contracts for the AT&amp;T sensors that has to do with smart cities, for example. So, contracting is a key element for all of those things. The other area where we could be more efficient and cost-effective is in our collections area. And previously, until FY '12, '13, we actually had the Revenue Bureau funding half an attorney to do collections work. That got cut. It was a down year. We have continued to increase the staffing on collections work, and we're taking general fund resources and doing collections work. We now have a total of eight attorneys and staff for five FTE equivalent, working on collections work. And over the last three years, we've brought in approximately $2 million. Each of the last several months, we have been setting records on how much money we're bringing in. You did fund a paralegal in the bump that has enabled us to do that, and we took some vacancy savings and hired a temporary legal assistant. But we won't have those funds next year. And so, that's our other ad package, is to make permanent the legal assistant and paralegal positions that we have on a temporary basis devoted to that collections work. We've also really looked at the work and have identified some efficiencies and ways we think we'll be able to do it more efficiently. So, those are the main things that I wanted to highlight, because I think that that, all of those staff ad packages, the collections ones, I think, will pay for themselves in the amount of money that we can bring in. And the contract one, I think, is the most cost-effective way to enable us to continue to review contracts, which are crucial for everything the city does on a timely basis.
Thank you. Great. Good presentation. Questions? Commissioner Fish?
So, I think it's fair to say that between Superfund and our utilities, we've been high consumers of quality legal services over the years. And I would be remiss if I didn't thank you for the superb legal advice we get on those very complicated matters.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
We have also added additional responsibilities, like boards and commissions, and public records requests, and other things. So, your office, in addition to managing a very active litigation docket, has other responsibilities. Do you have the right mix of staff to meet the ongoing needs of the city?
It's, I think we have excellent attorney staff. You know, we've all been talking at the city about succession planning for a period of time. Our office has lost a lot of very senior people purely to retirements over the last three, four years. And we've hired a lot of wonderful newer lawyers who are raring to go. And so, yes, we're getting there. I mean, it's been a real transition period. But as I mentioned, we have, for several years, added attorneys and not added staff. And our legal assistants and paralegals are very highly skilled professionals, and we really can't do our work without them.
Thank you. Commissioner Daley?
I would just like to express my appreciation and support for the legal services to development services for vacant houses.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Yes, I think Dan Simon is the attorney who's primarily doing that work, and he's doing a great job. And I think some real progress has been made that has some livability benefits, and so, thank you.
And in your report, it says that we've brought in over $737,000 in revenue through this program. Over how many years is that?
Well, I believe it's only been two years since the program has been in existence.
Great.
Christine's telling me I'm right, that it's two years.
All right. Thank you. Good presentation. That helped lay out.
Thank you.
Next up, special appropriations.
I'd just like to start by saying I hate doing these kind of things, so if I seem really nervous, I'm sorry. So, I'm just going to read this very brief presentation. Special appropriations are primarily used for general fund expenditures that are not specific to a bureau, and often provide citywide benefit. These include payments to non-city agencies, funding for some city programs, and some city set-asides. Some special appropriations are one-time allocations while others are ongoing. In fiscal year 1617, administration of special appropriations transferred from the City Budget Office to the Grants Management Division. In addition to the ongoing special appropriations allocation, funding was increased in fiscal year 1617 and 1718 for a competitive grant program. Since the inception of the competitive program, the city has received 311 applications and awarded 59 grants. The total requested budget for special appropriations for fiscal year 1819 is $13,788,612, which includes $4.2 million in internal programs, $6 million in external programs, $3.4 million in ad packages. The ad packages for 1819 are $884,500 in floodplain management, $153,914 in council transition, $17,507 for VOS, $2.1 million for infill implementation accelerate ADU development, $62,000 for gang-impacted family team coordinator, $10,460 for OIVP staff representative reclass, $192,218 for COCO PSAP, $78,646 for Last Thursday. And I have bureau staff available to answer any questions about the ad packages.
So, I just had a question about why some of them are special appropriations. For instance, the Office of Youth Violence Prevention Staff and the Gang-Impacted Family Team Coordinator, why isn't that coming from the Office of Youth Violence Prevention?
So, the Office of Youth Violence Prevention Program was moved to special appropriations, I think, in fiscal year 1516? I'm looking at Andrew. And I'm not, do you have a background on why that was transferred?
Yeah. Was that your question? I missed maybe the second part of it. It's, special appropriations, actually for the same reason as we're talking about open and accountable elections, and we're talking about potentially putting that in special appropriations, to the extent it moves commissioners. With the Office of Youth Violence Prevention, it was a little bit cleaner to have it in special appropriations, even though it is assigned, you know, to the mayor's office. He could assign it out to somewhere else.
Okay.
So, it's sort of a standalone function, and that was a convenient place to budget it.
Got it. Okay. And then I noticed that apparently nobody asked for the $1 million line item for grants.
That's correct.
So, how, I would hope you would consider continuing to do that, Mayor, because I think it's been a really great process. I had some questions, actually, about the council transition funding.
We'll ask Ben Smith to come up.
Name for the record, please.
Ben Smith, Office of Management and Finance.
Thanks, Ben.
So, obviously, we're going to have a changeover for Commissioner, for the Commissioner of Public Affairs. What does the $48,000 technology budget include?
So, that includes changing over the whole office on January 1st, when the new staff comes in. So, laptops, iPads, cellphones for all the staff. That also includes money for the interim transition staff for November and December for the new commissioner. So, the current plan is that they would be on the fifth floor of the Congress Center. And so, that's computers, phones, all that for that, that we're really renting from BTS for that time. And then all the labor costs associated with that transition.
Okay. And why isn't the computer set-aside reserve fund covering the computer parts of it?
So, the current policy is that the reserve fund is capturing money on a five-year basis. So, every year, they're saying aside money for that five-year basis of the computers being changed. For the council offices, they've been on a four-year cycle. So, what that means is, for the council offices, some of them have a negative balance for their transition funds. I've worked with some of your offices to add additional funding to make up that gap. Commissioner Saltzman's one where we haven't done that. So, there isn't transition fund, set-aside funds for those computer replacements at the moment.
Okay. It seems we should standardize that, because if some of us are setting aside the money appropriately, and some of us are not, that's, that then comes as a general.
I've addressed with Brendan, a potential to add some funding to that, to get everyone at least up to a positive balance.
I think we should have a policy on that. Thank you for bringing that. Why doesn't City Hall rent cover things like paints, carpets, all that kind of stuff?
So, the, there is maintenance, major maintenance money in the transition budget. So, that's separate from, and cost that will be covered by facilities. What we're really asking for is those non-maintenance items to be covered. Where the Commissioner Saltzman's office gets a little more difficult is, we haven't done a changeover in so long. So, that's why you're seeing a higher budget there for some of the work that needs to be done in that office.
And I haven't been paying attention. I don't know if you've replaced the carpets in my office or not. I mean, isn't, aren't they on a regular maintenance schedule, anyway?
There is a maintenance schedule, and I can take that up with Brian Engen, follow up with you on that.
In my defense, the carpet's a bit nondescript, so I'm not sure that anybody would be able to notice whether it should be changed or not, because we've been very careful and have not spilled things on it. Okay, I think that's my question about that, then. Thank you.
Well, Mayor, can I follow up on that comment? We, another unique thing about Commissioner Saltzman's office is he runs programs out of his office. So, he runs the Children's Levy, he runs the Gateway Domestic Violence Center, and other things, which accounts for the different budget items in his office. Is it, is it your intention to take those programs into the mayor's office?
Is it, is it your intention to take those programs into the Mayor's office?
I can tell you that with regard to the Children's Fund, that is my intention, and we're still in discussions with regard to the other. And I will give up my carpet budget for the Pettigrove Room.
One of the things that we...
It almost is alive.
...that we want to just raise for council, this request is considerably larger than the transition budgets have been in the past. And I think there's a really important policy conversation for council to have about the level of transition services we want to provide as we go through these elections. And I noticed one of the things to note, and we are, you know, OMF's proposing in here to provide temporary office space for the folks, you know, after the election and between that interim period. That is a discretionary expense. And not every elected official, in fact, I think most probably don't, get taxpayer-funded office space prior to taking office. There are, however, advantages to having transition staff and transition time. So, there are definitely pros and cons on both sides. From our perspective, $150,000 in this budget environment was a little bit challenging to find, and so we recommended the lower amount of $75,000. But certainly, this is much more of a conversation council needs to have about that standard level of support and make sure we enshrine that going forward.
And it's relatively new. When we came in, there was no transition funding for staff. We volunteered for, my staff volunteered from the election until they came in.
Does, I mean, when I was in a special election, I didn't even get a transition. I just, I came right in. And the, is, does your figure contemplate that there might be people who win the primary and therefore are looking for, like, seven months of office space? Or are you calculating it based on the assumption that these races are decided in November?
So, the transition budget that was created has a November 1st start date, with the idea being, I'd work with Tom and Carmen on identifying who their key transition staff are and telling them either, if they win in May, we have funding starting in November, or we're waiting until that November election, and then they're actually starting a little later.
Rob, did you have a question?
Yeah, just a quick one. So, am I to understand that the new Commissioner and their staff get all new equipment? Or, I mean, it sounded like you were going to be purchasing all new equipment. And does all the existing equipment, assuming that not all of it is end-of-life, does that go back into the BTS pool? Or, I mean, how's it work?
So, they do, the policy has been that they do get new equipment. That's what we did for the last transitions for the Mayor and Commissioner Udaley. I know BTS looks to either reuse that, or they do have a nonprofit, I believe, they deal with for equipment the city no longer uses, but making sure there's a home for it.
Frida?
Couple of questions, and they might be more addressed toward Andrew, because I'm reading your notes. On All Hands Raise, you give a comment that you aren't recommending it because of citywide equity impacts. Could you explain what you mean by that?
Yeah, this was the proposed 5% reduction to the city's contribution. Asha, do you want to, yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Asha Bel-Dubose for the record. And basically, All Hands Raise is a program that works with Portland Public Schools and other nonprofits to meet indicators for community-wide educational improvement benefits. So, a reduction to their budget, their ongoing budget allocation, would kind of impact the partners that they work with and their ability to meet their indicators and goals.
So, does that mean all the schools? Because you say Portland Public, you have to realize it's supposed to be county-wide All Hands Raise.
I just mean the schools that they're partnered with. So, the ones that they're partnered with, that they, you know, work with in a funding sense, and they work with in a staffing sense, if we reduce their ongoing allocation, it'll impact the services they provide.
I'd like to know what some of the services they provide to the different school districts are, because I have to tell you, I've not been a supporter of this group, so I'd like to know that. Thank you very much. A couple of other questions, and these, I think they're more addressed toward Andrew's group, is in Future Connect, you mentioned, it's mentioned the collaboration with PCC and 600 Students. I think it's a great program. Curious if you work with any collaboration with Mount Hood, since David Douglas has the largest high school in the state, and we're in the Mount Hood area.
Well, we'll have to talk to Future Connect and get back to you on that, unless you know offhand.
Okay. And my last question has to do with RAC. And I'm not against your 10% reduction, just more curious, it is region-wide, and we're putting in a significant amount of money into RAC. What do the Clackamas County, Multnomah County, those other jurisdictions put into it? Because it appears the money's dispersed through all of them. And it could be just a percentage.
Yeah, we can get back to you with specifics. I know last year, unless Multnomah County, I think it was about $150,000 or $200,000 contribution, but we'll...
So, they're putting hardly any, is the answer to your question.
Well, that would be my next thing, is if they're not equitably putting into it, but we're dispersing it out equitably, I think we need to be relooking at how much money we're putting into it, because they also get arts tax, if I believe.
No, no, no in both questions, but we have someone, I think, from RAC who could answer those questions.
Okay. Thank you.
Should we bring him up?
Is RAC making a presentation or just here?
Oh, I don't know. I don't think there are any presentations on the special...
Mayor, why don't we invite Jeff Hawthorne to come forward?
Jeff, do you, can you shed some light on that Forest Police name for the record?
Sure. Jeff Hawthorne, Interim Executive Director of RAC. And with regard to the counties, Clackamas County's investment is currently $135,000. Washington County's investment is $100,000. We do support the entire Truck County region, but we track very closely where the dollars are coming from, and we invest those dollars proportionally in the jurisdictions where the funding comes from. So, city of Portland money is invested only in the city of Portland, same for Multnomah County, and same for those other two counties.
That's not to say, Frida, that we would love to be able to get more robust contributions from Washington County and Clackamas. Jeff, first, I have the honor of being the liaison to the Regional Arts and Culture Council, so I want to acknowledge that this has been a very challenging year. The agency is going through a leadership transition, and we are currently interviewing finalists for the executive director position, so that's a huge undertaking. The board is developing a more robust equity agenda and is talking about, raising very important questions about how we carve up the pie. Understandably, there are some important actors in our community that are concerned about that, and so that's a, it's a controversial subject. We have new board members. RAC has been extremely helpful in developing an arts affordability agenda. I could go on and on and on. Jeff has been the interim executive director during all this change, and I want to just compliment you for the work that you've done. But I also want to ask you about the proposed 10% cut, which I do not support. What practically does that mean in terms of programs you can no longer fund?
Well, it's certainly very disheartening to be one of the few allocations, if not the only allocation, being asked to take such a significant cut. We looked at our budget closely to accommodate the 5% cut, and it's, it's difficult to take that cut without cutting our largest program, which is our grant-making program. That is, 50% of our budget goes out the door as grants. And so, that would be impacted by the 5% cut, even more so by a 10% cut. This at a time where we've all acknowledged that arts affordability is a problem in our community, and as I testified a couple of weeks ago, one of the best things that RAC can do during this crisis is to hold the line on its investments to artists and arts organizations in this community. Furthermore, I'd like to add that we've been doing a lot of great work on equity. We were asked to spread our resources more equitably without increasing our budget, and we have been doing so. And so, a 10% cut would be a real hit on our equity work as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
I guess I'll just jump in and say that an ad package came out of my office, which was to accelerate ADU development. I handed out a little info sheet and some books to my colleagues, and I just want to convey a couple of things that I don't think came through in this report. We've been working on a residential infill project and associated policies for quite some time, a long time before we arrived here. I think it's going to come forward at some point this year. It will allow homeowners to build ADUs on their single-family properties, either an internal ADU in their basement, an attached ADU to the house, usually referred to as an in-law apartment, or a completely detached unit. I think there's incredible potential here, but I'm very concerned that because there is no loan product for ADUs, that only relatively affluent homeowners will be able to take advantage of our residential infill policies. And so, this ad package is about developing a loan product that a more average household could qualify for, because it will take into account the rents that that homeowner will receive from the ADU. And we're also looking at added incentives for affordable rents. So, we have the potential to inspire the private market to build thousands of units over the next several years at a relatively low investment on the, on the part of the city. Right now, we subsidize affordable housing to the tune of around $100,000 per unit. Between the SDCs that we'd be foregoing on these ADUs, with a covenant that they be built for long-term rentals, not for short-term rentals, and the initial investment, it would be less than $16,000 per unit if we, based on building 6,000 ADUs over the next few years. So, just wanted to put that out there, see if anyone has any questions. My Chief of Staff is also here to talk about it a few.
Just one quick one. Commissioner Udaley, have, have we done any, has the city done any, or anyone else, for that matter, done any research to indicate how much appetite there is for ADU construction by the private homeowners? I mean, do we know if, if this is something that we engage in, that there is, there's going to be a robust response from the community? I mean, people say they want to help, but...
Marshall, do you want to come? Yeah, I mean, absolutely. I think because we've had restrictive zoning, ADU development has been relatively low. It was, I think, 50 units per year, up until we waived the SDCs, and it bumped up to 500 units per year. There's other cities that have a much higher number of ADUs per capita. And I just want to add, this is a phenomenon that began in the early 20th century, and it was, it was about creating affordable housing. So, whether that was for your aging parents, a family member with a disability, you know, that's, that's where, how this came about. And it really does stand to make a significant dent, especially in that 60% to 80% zone that we talked about, where we're 6,000 to 8,000 units short. But I'm going to ask Marshall, please state your name for the record, sir.
I'm Marshall Runkel. I'm the Chief of Staff for Commissioner Udaley. There, the city of Los Angeles, last year, recognized a jump from a couple of ADUs a year to 2,000 a year by making policy changes. You can see in the graph that we distributed that there's a big jump associated with development when we waived the SDC fees. What the experts in the field, and maybe the biggest expert in the country lives here in Portland and just published the Backyard Revolution book, has identified, there's a consensus in the community that the financing mechanism is the roadblock for achieving scale. This is essentially a market transformation strategy that says, if we change the financing mechanism or create a financing mechanism, the market will respond. And forever, it's worth jurisdictions up and down the coast are looking at strategies like this. I just wrote a grant, or a letter of support for a grant for Fannie Mae, who's also investigating this idea. I think that this is one of those things where there's a, all the market signals are pointing that this is a area that's ripe for innovation.
So, that author's done that research, and I could, if I get the book, I can find it?
That's right. I'll get you a copy of the book.
Thank, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thanks. So, let's move on, unless anybody has a burning question. Thank you very much for your presentation, and thank you, Marshall. Next up is the Office of Planning and Sustainability, Bureau of Planning and Sustainability.
Is that what? Oh, no.
Thanks for the call.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon.
Hey. Do we have the...
I feel like everyone should be bringing us cookies at this point, since we all have to sit here through, through our lunch hour. I'm going to mark you all down. Kidding. I'm getting a little salty.
So, I'm waiting for him to load up the presentation. Good afternoon, Susan Anderson, the Director of the Bureau of Planning and Sustainability. Nice to see you again. And with me is Joe Zender, my chief planner, and Jessica Yang, financial manager. So, I'm going to spend a few minutes reviewing our budget and our funding sources, and then our requested ad packages and the requested cut. Let me start, I need the, oh, sorry. So, let me start with a quick overview of our budget, where we get our money from. We have $17 million generally a year in funding, and $17 million for this current year. About half of that is general fund. About a third comes from the Solid Waste Management Fund, and 15% to 20% comes from grants or contracts or other, funding from other agencies, including the Bureau of Development Services, which funds some of our rewriting and improvements to the code. So, over the years, it's been pretty stable in terms of general fund resources. We've gotten about $8 million a year. Over the same time period, what's not shown in there is the Solid Waste Management Fund, and then also grants. So, over the past 10 years, we've brought in more than $40 million in state, federal, and foundation grants to the Bureau. Those have been focused on energy conservation, renewable energy, and focused on climate action in general. So, we continue to be a national leader on taking action on climate change. Let me walk through my decision packages. I have four of them. The first one is focused on increasing the supply and range of housing. It's split into four parts. The first part is looking at zoning-related solutions to housing and shelter options for extremely low-income and homeless households. The second project is finding ways to preserve close-in, older housing that's currently pretty affordable, but is in danger of being torn down. The third is updating the McAdam Plan District. The Plan District is 30 years old. It's a great, close-in area that could definitely provide more housing. And fourth, we'd like to do a full assessment in the southwest corridor of housing and mixed-use development sites, so we can look for opportunities for development before any new major light rail goes into that area. So, and we would be doing that in conjunction with Metro and the Housing Bureau. Do you want me to take questions after each one, or go through all four?
Why don't you go through the whole presentation?
Okay. The second decision package focuses on development in East Portland. We currently have, as you know, lots of bureaus working in East Portland, but we haven't done a good job of assessing and cataloging exactly what's going on. The budget mapping, I think, is a good start, but we would like to pull all the information together, so that would enable the community and city government together to agree on what has actually happened over the past decade, and enable us to really look at what we should be doing next. Some in the community are calling this a quadrant plan, similar to what was done with the central city. It's not really quite the same, because that was really just focused on zoning. We don't want this to be focused just on zoning, but I think it's an assessment that should go beyond that, and look at all the different ways that we can leverage our public investments with... with private investment dollars. So that's the second ask. The third request is to broaden the historic resources inventory. This would allow us to add a planning assistant to our one-person historic planning, historic resources team. So much of this work is being done by volunteers. Most cities have more than one historic planner. We have one. And that person is able to sort of mobilize volunteers to be able to put together this historic resources inventory. But it's also going to allow, to allow us to focus on historic cultural resources for underrepresented communities in East Portland. So a little bit of a shift away from just looking at the traditional historic buildings. The last ad package is to create and staff an equity committee for the work that's being done on open data and smart cities. So it's essential, and we've heard this loud and clear from the community, that lower-income residents, people of color, people with disabilities, that they all also get to benefit from investments in technology by the city. And we need their advice in order to make sure that that happens. So those are our four ad packages. In terms of cut, we propose cutting three positions and about $80,000 in professional contracts. If we don't take that cut, if you were to give us that $435,000, we would be able to move on the work around housing options on the shelter options, preserving middle housing, and the McAdam project. And then finally, the only other item I wanted to mention is last year at this time, you directed us to work with the Budget Office and the Bureau of Development Services to come up with a longer-term solution to funding improvements in the zoning code, and we've done that. So the three of us worked together and came up with a long-term solution based on a percentage of land use fees. And that's it.
Very good. Questions? Frida.
On your ad package, which I'm not against, the one for East Portland, how... I'm not as familiar with zoning and quadrant plans and et cetera. So what would you say, you're saying that this would be a little more broader than a quadrant plan? When some, when an area has a quadrant plan, is there funding that goes through it? Or is it just that it helps direct bureaus to fund things?
So let me, so doing quadrant plans is not a tradition or anything. We've done them once, and we did it for the central city. And we did it because when we tried to do the whole plan, it was just too big. So we broke it up into pieces. We then started with what I call an environmental scan, or what's going on there. And that's really what we need to do in East Portland, is as we have conversation, and I'm sure as all of you have had conversations, there's just disagreement on what's going on, how much has actually happened so far. There's, you know, a dozen-plus different agencies and bureaus working in East Portland, plus nonprofits. And we don't even have a story to really understand what's going on and what are things. We have the East Portland Action Plan, which is a nice roadmap for where to go next, but I don't think we've really taken a good look and been able to say, here's where we are and here's where we need to go next. Zoning could be a part of the solution, but absolutely, you know, financing tools and a whole lot of other things are a part of that package, too.
So you feel if you do this, you'll end up with a more comprehensive plan than a quadrant plan?
I'd say it's not a plan. I'd say it's basically to be able to serve up for all the work, whether it's to develop a financing solution, to decide we need to new, to look at new zoning options, to look at partnerships with Prosper Portland. I think all of those things, we could just jump in and do them one by one, which is what we're kind of doing now, but we don't have really the story altogether.
So it would be a guidance versus, I have a thing with plans. I worked on the Gateway Urban Renewal, they did so many plans and nothing, they all went on a shelf.
Right.
And nothing got done. So this would be more developing a guidance that you can actually act on versus some plan that might go on a shelf.
But I think Jill might have one example. I know that we've been working with Prosper to line up some work out there. And this, to just jump in and do the work, we can do that, but this sort of lays the stage much, in a much more clear way.
This project originated on a request from East Portland Action Plan. And the specifics of what we want to cover in a piece of work like this, we're still working on with them and with Prosper and the other partners. But the one thing that this plan was, they were hoping for was a plan that showed and delivered on a coordinated commitment of resources to get things done in East Portland. Like it's coming, it's supposed to come with the whole package. At the same time, that if you look at even the Budget Office and the materials you've been reviewing, there's a lot that the city's already mobilized in terms of resources to spend in East Portland. Part of what we want to do initially is connect the dots and connect that back to community priorities. And also to make sure that as PBOT is doing 122nd, and Parks is doing Parks, and Prosper is working in the NPIs, we have a shared point of view about what it is that we're trying to accomplish, and we can leverage each other's work more. If nothing else, this planning exercise can hopefully get us to that point. Specifically, do we do all of East Portland, or focus in on like Rosewood or Division Midway? That's a discussion that we all need to have. But for this ad package, based on the request from East Portland Action Plan, we wanted to put in a placeholder to get this work going in the coming year.
No, I appreciate that. I'm just going to have to go back and explain to them because they keep talking quadrant plan. So to say that this item happens to be equivalent, if not more, and you're trying to achieve things, to coordinate things better, because right now, I agree with you, it's piecemeal on what's being done, other than the MPM with transportation, which is a little more coordinated.
They can call it a quadrant plan. That's okay. It just, you know, it's just words in terms of that. But I think what we're trying to do is something more than that.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question there. Susan, in the last number of months, we've been talking about two new policies, one involving bird-friendly design, and the second involving light and design. And where are they in the queue? And what additional resources would we need to accelerate the planning portion of both?
So in the central city plan, there are, there is a policy for bird-friendly design.
Right.
So I'm not sure if you mean additional work that you'd like us to focus on, but that's something we could look at.
The implementation work, so the code work and the follow-up work. Where is that in the queue?
Yeah. So it's in the central city plan, which you'll be adopting, and then the code is part of the plan that you'll be adopting very soon. So we don't need to do additional work on the, on bird-friendly?
On bird-friendly. And what about with light?
On lighting, we haven't gone into that, and we haven't put forward an ad package to do that. If it was a priority, we could look at it and see if it's something that you all wanted us to prioritize.
And so presumably, if the council wanted to speed up that work, we'd have to draft an ad package that gave you the dollars for the staff to do that work?
Yes, or eliminate something else that we're doing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So the East Portland Action Plan had a fairly robust list of budget asks. And I'm wondering where this falls in terms of their priorities?
I don't know that I have their list.
Okay, maybe I'll direct that to the Budget Office that we, I have that list. So I'll make sure that I coordinate, because I want to make sure that if we are going to pick some of these one-time-only requests, that we actually make sure they're top priorities for EPAP.
Absolutely.
And I want to second what Frida said about, having just met with them recently, there was a lot of confusion about the nomenclature of this plan. And I think the language will matter. So if the council decides to fund this, I want to make sure that this is what they want.
Right. I think that's important, because if they want a quadrant plan that's focused on zoning only, I don't think that's actually what they're looking for.
Hallelujah, it'd cost less, so there you have it. Good. Anything else?
More of a question, because it's the middle, middle housing work that you're doing. When is that going to be going to city council? You know, I've heard, I've sat at some meetings and having to do with ADUs and duplexes, triplexes in East Portland and everything. When is that?
So that's part of the residential infill project, and it begins discussions at the Planning and Sustainability Commission in the next month. And so that process will take a couple of months, two or three months. I think there's some interest. We're also looking at multifamily zoning right now, that we may want to kind of merge those together, two different projects, but so that it's not confusing to council why we're doing one and then the other. And so it would probably be in the very early fall when it actually, the vote here.
All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Next up is Prosper Portland. And we're a few minutes ahead of schedule, which is good. Colleagues, I want to apologize. I'm going to have to leave the session early. But what I'll do is I'll turn this over to Nick. He's the council president upon my departure. Come on up, Prosper Portland. Director Brannum, did you want to start this off?
Yes, I just need to get it. Boss is, that's right. You guys have it?
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Wheeler and commissioners. I'm Tavo Cruz, Chair of the Board of Commissioners for Prosper Portland, and I am pleased to participate in today's work session on the economic development and city general fund portions of Prosper Portland's fiscal year 2018-19 requested budget. One of the best parts of my role as a commissioner has been to gain a deeper understanding of the impact of our economic development initiatives, not only by evaluating the quantitative impact, but also through hearing incredible stories of transformation from community leaders, job seekers, and small business owners about their impact. Our requested budget comes as the result of significant staff work and engagement from our Budget Advisory Committee. On behalf of Prosper Portland's Board of Commissioners, I would like to thank both the community partners and staff for these efforts, especially for tackling the challenging conversations around potential reductions in such a constructive way. We look forward to coming back to you in May to discuss the broader budget, including urban renewal areas and planned capital investments critical to Portland's growth. So with that, I will hand the presentation over to Kimberly Brannum, our executive director.
Thank you, Chair Cruz, and good afternoon, mayor, commissioners, Budget Advisory Committee members. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. I'm going to provide some high-level overview of how our decision packages fit within our requested budget. And then Bobby is going to get into some detail. I'm also joined by Tony Barnes, and he's our budget officer. So if there's any questions, he can, he can come up to the dais as well. So, let's see, if I can get the PowerPoint to work. Nope. Thank you. It's a good team effort. I appreciate it, Andrew.
This is why autonomous vehicles will never work.
All right. So this visual summarizes our strategic plan and our objective of building an equitable economy in Portland. And what we're going to talk about today really focuses on the left-hand side of this visual. So how we apply our business development and technical assistance tools and our community capacity and workforce development training to increase access to high-quality employment, to create 21st century partnerships, and to support equitable wealth creation. When we come back in May, we will spend time digging into the 80-plus-million-dollar portion of our budget that supports commercial and mixed-use investment with the goal of supporting healthy and complete neighborhoods across our city. So to dive in just a little bit to what makes up our economic development-based budget, about 50% of our resources come from city general funds. The other 50% come from federal community development block grant dollars. About 15% comes from enterprise zone resources, and about 11% comes from resources that support the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative districts through tax increment resources and city general fund, I'm sorry, and revenue sharing. So these really are precious resources that we steward to support the objectives that we mentioned before. This slide here tries to demonstrate the way in which our city general fund resources leverage our federal and other kinds of resources. In particular, because of the conditions of community development block grant dollars and geographic constraints of our tax increment finance resources, we make sure that when we put forth city general funds, that it really does support things that are citywide in nature. So with that, I will turn it over to Bobby to talk a little bit about the five cut packages and 10 ad packages.
Good deal. Thanks, Kimberly. Let's see if we can get this moving. Oops, yep, there we go. So within the Economic Development Department, there are basically four core services that we deliver. First one is a small business support, and this is a program that leverages 11 community organizations. We provide a wraparound small business support to predominantly people of color and women. The second one is traded sector. Let me see if I can get this right. Here we go. Okay, thank you. The traded sector, when I started this position at Prosper Portland less than a year ago, one of the surprises that I came across is that 95% of the businesses that we support in our key industry cluster are actually small businesses. Even here in Portland, we really are a small-business town. And so that shouldn't really be a surprise, but it was a surprise to me when I started. And when I say key industry cluster companies, we're talking about athletic outdoor, green cities, advanced manufacturing, and software. And what we're trying to do now is use the trade sector companies to actually help promote equitable economy by encouraging them to hire locally, but also diversity of workers and retention, culture change within those companies. And so that's a big part of what we do. And workforce training, this is a popular one. Everyone loves workforce training. But we are probably the cities within the organization, largest purchaser of work systems program. We end up serving over 1,000 underserved adults and youth. And our goal is to align these trainings into high-demand careers.
Bobby, what does IBRN stand for, under small business support?
I'm sorry?
It says IBRN in brackets.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a lot of acronyms, and we keep changing this. It's really frustrating. I apologize. So the small business support, the name is called Inclusive Business Resource Network.
Thank you.
And so that is the platform that we deliver our small business support. And we won't change that name ever again. We'll just keep it. It keeps changing every time. Exactly. I apologize. The last part is the, what is what we call community and business districts development, the NPI, a very popular program in this community that Kimberly helped start, is the Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative and Main Street Network, and also Venture Portland, which is also part of this portfolio of services. And, you know, collectively, we provide technical assistance and grants and training for small businesses to thrive from bottom up, neighborhood-based economic development strategy. So those are the four buckets, and I'm just kind of flying through this. So if you have any questions, just let us know. And then through our Budget Advisory Committee and our Prosper Portland Commission, we went through a rigorous budget process with a 5% cut of our general funds. And this is the recommendation that we're providing. First is the working capital cuts of 52,000. It's under IBRN, the Inclusive Business Resource Network. Second is the healthcare cluster. This has been part of our strategic plan for a while to go into this cluster, because it's such a cluster that has done really well even during the recession. But that's a program that we'll temporarily hold off and cut that program. And then in the workforce development, it's a about 22 spots that we'll have to eliminate. I believe that's right, 20, oh, I'm sorry, 12 spots that we'll have to eliminate with the 5% cut. But the total number's over 1,000, so it's pretty a minor cut. And then with the NPI, Alberta Main Street, they'll graduate from our NPI program. And then the last part is a 5% cut for Venture Portland. And so those will be our recommended cuts. In terms of add-backs, let's see, I won't go into... In terms of add-backs, let's see, I won't go into all the line items here, because there's a lot on the screen, but most, if not all, the items listed are investments that will help provide additional small business technical assistance for people of color and women, inclusive hiring and retention programs for industry clusters, brownfield program, workforce navigators, NPI capacity building, and business district support. So these are the themes behind these items that we have front of you as our add package.
So with that, we would be happy to take any questions and hear any comments that you have.
Who has a question? Dan?
So one of your add packages is brownfield administration? That's an add package, correct?
Yes.
So what are you doing with brownfields?
So as part of city council's, I think it was a resolution to move forward with the new state authorization, Prosper Portland agreed to help put together a program. And so the staff person would be responsible for our role in putting that program together.
So I guess, you know, not with all due respect to the state, I mean, we've been talking about brownfields for a very, 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 very long time. And I've never seen, I've yet to see any really substantive developments of a brownfield. So are we just doing this because the state passed it and we're being expected to be a good team player? Or is there really something, is there a project, is there a brownfield project in the pipeline? I'd love to hear about it.
Many of our redevelopment projects in Portland are actually brownfield-related. And it's just the nature of our economy that has evolved from agriculture to, I mean, the industrial, many of our industrial sites that's been redeveloped, Pearl District or South Waterfront, they were all brownfields that were capped. This is just an additional tool on top of all the tools that we have already. And whether this tool turns out to be a real useful tool is something that we'll have to try and see. But at this point, we will look for other funds and work with the state to see if we can get additional, different types of funding to add this particular program in place with the number of other tools that we have.
And I assume this is to hire somebody to manage the program?
That's correct. Is to get the program up and started and activate the program.
I guess I'm skeptical, as you can tell.
Commissioner Daley?
I just had a quick question. Does NPI work with small business owners to negotiate solid, long-term leases?
It's a great question. I think it has done that on, sorry, it feels loud, on kind of an ad hoc basis. But as part of our look into affordable commercial space and working with commercial tenants, I think it's a program that we want to build out so that we feel like there's a broader level of support for that. So yes, they do it, but I think we'd like to see it scaled. And so we have been working with our Inclusive Business Resource Network partners, as well as some internal staff who have that expertise, to be, to start putting on programs like that, and we want to scale that, so more to come there.
I'm just, I'm thinking of one of my favorite restaurants in one of our NPIs that was priced out of their space after really helping revitalize the area that they were in. And I'd love to see us looking at how to help those business owners achieve long-term stability and, you know, that includes negotiating solid leases, but perhaps also rent stabilization funds.
Yep.
Just wanted to put that out there.
Yes, thanks.
Commissioner Fritz?
First, thank you very much for your presentation, for all your work. Thank you for volunteering, Tavo. I think, I want to highlight the City Budget Office recommendation that we should look at the potential costs and benefits of Prosper Portland becoming a city bureau, and I think that's obviously part of the ongoing conversation. And then also about what do we do with funding the programs thereafter. I had a question on the Neighborhood Prosperity Network's staff increases. How would that work without the AmeriCorps staff? I thought the AmeriCorps staff are the staff of the NPIs.
Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, no, that's really the issue, is that the funding through AmeriCorps program is sunsetting.
From the federal level?
That's correct. And so this funding is to replace that capacity.
I see.
Yeah.
Got it. And then, I didn't understand on Venture Portland, so the 5% is 16, 8. And you could get there either by reducing staff by half an FTE or by reducing staff, small business investment by 6,000. 6,000 and 16,000 are not the same number?
No, I just noticed that as well. I think the grant number is actually higher.
So it would essentially be 16?
Yeah, exactly.
Not 6?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's just a typo. Okay. And then as far as the Alberta Main Street, it's now very successful, so presumably they can start funding their own coordinators. Is that the thinking behind that?
So Commissioner, we had in this year's budget anticipated that this was going to be our last year of support to the Alberta Main Street. I think they would love to continue to be supported. It is our estimate that given the activity and the growth of the district, that it is appropriate, it is appropriate to follow the agreement that we had and to have this year be the last year of funding.
Yeah, because we stepped it down, didn't we, over several years?
That's right, yes.
And it seems like that's a good model, that once the streets do become really successful, that we give fair warning, but then move on to another area that needs the extra help.
And they've been looking at creating a business improvement district or an economic improvement district, which also feels like a very viable model after sort of a certain level of success in the district. And so we've been providing technical assistance, hoping that that will be something that looks promising.
Okay. And then for the Macasis, this year you've used existing resources. Why can't you continue using existing resources?
Dan, you want to speak to that?
Well, the part of our, when I started in this position a little less than a year ago, one of the things that we did is create a five-year plan for my department. And one of the plans is recession planning. We know it's coming, and Josh keeps telling us it's coming. And so what we wanted to do is ensure that our core services, the four areas that we talked about today, are maintained even during the recession. And so we are moving parts of our, what is called enterprise-owned money, into recession-proof budgeting process. Because that's when our small business needs us the most, is during the recession. And so we just want to make sure we have consistent level of services throughout the next recession.
Thank you.
Yes?
Do you know who, if anyone, is supporting the African-American business in the Alberta African-American owners, business owners?
On the Alberta Main, excuse me, within the Alberta Main Street? So, you know, we do have, I think MISO, so microenterprises, so we have Inclusive Business Resource Network partners. Each partner is assigned to a Neighborhood Prosperity Initiative or Main Street District. So I believe that MISO has been paired up with the Alberta Main Street, but we can confirm that. And their priority is supporting entrepreneurs of color and supporting long-term business owners within a given district. Because Alberta, because Alberta is within the interstate urban renewal area, we also have staff who are available to support individual businesses. So they're working with Black United Fund, for example, to look at how that organization is going to build out its space. But, you know, it's been an ongoing conversation with the Alberta Main Street to make sure that long-term businesses are really prioritized within the programming. And so I think that's, yeah.
Frida?
Couple of questions. First, your healthcare cluster cut, I see it's because you haven't hired anyone for it. I'm a little concerned about it because out in East Portland, we have a huge contingency of healthcare. And actually, our high school, as well as Mount Hood Community Colleges, is focusing on education and workforce development in that area, partly because you had planned a healthcare cluster. So it's kind of undercutting their long-term plans, which they've already invested in to develop that job, the workforce development in that area. So I'm a little concerned that you're cutting the cluster several, after everyone else has started heading in that direction because of your support. Also, this is going to be really odd, because I sit on two sides, but East Portland Action Plan wanted to do what you were doing about the Gateway Education Economic Development Center. For those that know, I'm a David Douglas School Board. We are working on a project in that area with a private developer, so it's kind of a conflict, but I'm here to ask.
Let's see, so to your first question, you know, I think we, we would love to be able to if the budget situation were different. I think we would love to be able to hire an additional person to support cluster work within healthcare. I think we acknowledge that there are other actors within the healthcare field. So in particular, Work Systems just received a federal fund, I think a year and a half ago, brought in about $9 million. And so they have somebody who's doing full-time workforce development programming. And so because, you know, we have a partner who's doing a lot of the work that we originally anticipated, I think we felt more comfortable, you know, with this decision package. But certainly, that's a decision that city council can always make, is to not take that decision package. We are going to, with some of the resources that we have this year, have a consultant advise us on how we could leverage some of our existing workforce programs and other initiatives to support the industry and anchor institutions like healthcare. To the second one, we've been having great conversations in the Gateway District to look at development opportunities that could deliver on a lot of the promise of the Gateway Economic Development and Education Center. And I think the staff are going to begin working and having more focus groups and really thinking about, given the private development that's taking place, how we can make sure that some of those priorities with David Douglas and others are met.
Yeah, show.
As it relates to the small business working capital, micro loan, reduction of 52,000, do you anticipate any pushback from the minority community for lack of funding, or is it a little bit supported by the community?
You want to talk about the conversations that?
Right, no, this is, the concern that the Budget Advisory Committee raised was that with the default rate, over time, because there is working capital now, because people borrow, we pay back, and then we lend it back out. Certainly, we could, we would certainly embrace the idea of adding more to it, and certainly the Budget Advisory Committee would support that. But given the 5% cut, and given that there is working capital now, we decided that we would, we would cut this portion out for now. But certainly, more capacity for access to capital, the better it is, especially for smaller startup, starting companies or small businesses.
So are they aware of your recommendation for a cut?
Oh, absolutely. They've reviewed all the items that we presented to you.
That's your advisory council, that's not necessarily your business owners.
Oh, yeah, we, yeah, we have business, private sector also on our advisory committee. Next year, we'll have you on our advisory committee show, if that's okay.
Bobby, I have a question. Could you remind us, what are the existing programs we have that help small businesses that are being squeezed around their commercial rents? So how do we support small businesses, both in the NPI, in our urban renewal districts and outside, that are experiencing rising cost of rent?
Yeah, so it's a great question, Commissioner. We have, within the urban renewal areas, we have better tools right now to help with rent stabilization. And we have a couple of pilot programs in commercial spaces that we ourselves control that will provide more affordable space. So within Alberta Commons, Lent's Commons, and at 10th and Yem Hill, we will be providing, you know, subsidized space to businesses that would otherwise be priced out or not have access to growing markets. We also have grant programs that can help in concert with rental agreements to make sure that lease rates stay at a rate that people can absorb. And then finally, with our business technical assistance, we do help advise on how people can continue to take advantage of growing markets and be prepared for upcoming lease negotiations. But I think this really is an area that we're just beginning to kind of scope out. We want to have a full affordable commercial space strategy that we can come back to city council and to our board with, because we believe that this is something that we need to scale. Right now, it's helpful to have the pilots, so that we can begin really learning from what's working. And, you know, unlike with the, on the residential side, there's no federal designation of what affordable means. And so it's actually kind of an interesting policy challenge of how you create tools within commercial retail space.
Thank you very much. Dan?
So we heard during the Office of Neighborhood Involvement Budget Review last week, that the cannabis, part of the cannabis tax is going to Prosper Portland for small business development. I guess I'm just curious, what, what are you doing with those funds?
No, so it would be, I don't, you may recall, one of the buckets that we deliver on with general funds is a small business support, IBRN, Inclusive Business Resource Network. So it would leverage into that program. So the, I believe it came down to, at the end, 150,000, I believe, for business support, small business technical. So that number kind of switched over time, but I think it ended up at 150,000. So we'll use IBRN program and add the cannabis support program to it. And so they can leverage our legal services, marketing, branding, technical assistance within that program.
Okay. Thank you. So we have time for a couple, who hasn't spoken yet who would like to be recognized?
In this section or?
Well, this is, this is our, this is our last item, so let's go around the horn here. Final questions? Frida?
First, I double down on commissioners who request for giving assistance in lease negotiations. I found the last time I leased my commercial property, I actually helped write their lease to benefit them because they just didn't have that ability. So I can see where there's great need. I'd like to know, within your URAs and your public projects, you're doing quite a bit in Lent, what you're doing to help support the economic benefit workforce, because many of the residents out in East Portland are very low-wage if they're employed in those higher-wage jobs are really needed.
The, thank you for the question. The issue around the lease is really a serious issue. And we take it very seriously at Prosper Portland. We've met with Main Street Alliance on this issue. We're the largest funder of small business legal clinic. In fact, Prosper Portland helped find, created that service from Lewis &amp; Clark, located there. And I did meet with the whole team to see what we can do to expand, leverage this technical assistance, and make sure that people are educated, because a lot of folks sign and then afterwards, they're asking for legal services. Main Street Alliance is, will be submitting some sort of requests, I believe, to add a little bit more capacity in this, in this area, and we would support that. There's a lot of horror stories out there around lease, signed lease agreements that is just outrageous. And so this is an area that we would like to advise you to keep your eyes on. You will probably hear some proposals from Main Street Alliance around that, and I think it's overall, it's a good idea. It's just a big issue. In terms of Lent, many of our workforce, well, all of our workforce development program are really to serve those who have been traditionally marginalized from our economy. So there are requirements in terms of income. And so we're using this money to actually serve the hardest-serving populations. And so, you know, sometimes people say, will say, well, your performance numbers will be compromised by that. But we believe that because of our mission around building an equitable economy, we have to serve those that are on the very margin. And we're talking about folks straight out of the prison system, so ex-offenders. We're talking about folks with really serious barriers. And so all of our workforce development programs are geared towards those population. And so this is an area we'll keep our eyes on, and hopefully, we can expand down the road.
Rob, final question?
Yeah, just a little quickly, a follow-up on that. So do you guys have any intersection with the Joint Office of Homeless Services? I mean, do you, do you work with them on stuff, and do they refer folks to you?
That's a good question. So we have had a number of intersection points, mostly looking at specific properties that we're not immediately disposing, to see if those are good candidates for shelters or interim uses. And so there was a property in Kenton that we made available. interim uses, and so there was a property in Kenton that we made available and partnered with the Joint Office on. We've also sat as part of a Home for Everyone, they have a specific program that focuses on workforce development. So the Economic Opportunity Program, that we're a major funder of, has expanded and has begun to use what would be called, like, wraparound services, to make sure that people who are housed and who are receiving workforce training also have, you know, transit passes if need be, or really are able to be successful in accessing training and potentially employment. So I think, you know, we, there are probably opportunities for us to further collaborate, but we have had a number of points of intersection with Mark Jolyn and his team.
Okay, well, we are five minutes ahead of time. We'll be starting again tomorrow at 9:30 with Public Safety and Transportation. Kimberly, thanks to you and your team for an excellent presentation. Thank you to our citizen budget advisors for their good questions and their service, and if there are no other items to be discussed, we're adjourned until tomorrow morning. Thank you all.